This is a good day.
Yeah, good job, James. Okay, we're gonna call to order and please stand and join with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okey doke. Happy New Year, everybody. Did everybody blink? And 2021 is over, just like that, huh? Morning, Matthew. So, fellow commissioners, amendments, approval of the agenda. We're gonna pull five-
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Yes, in the interest of time, we're going to pull 5A. And also, it's very important, three different people that wanted to travel down to Curry County, two from Roseburg, one from Lebanon, to present this award to Connie Hunter. And the forecast today was not good, and also, just the meeting kind of piled up there. The second one that I'd like to postpone is item 6B.
Okay.
Presentation from Curry County Recovery Coordinator Steve Byerlin and Leonard Krug, President of the Oregon Anguished Association. We'll postpone that till the 19th.
Okay.
And then, I would like to read real quick a letter to Oregon Department of Transportation. And also, I'd like to give a real quick COVID report, if I may, Board.
Yeah, let's do that after we do the, all the amendments and approvals. How's that?
Very good. And then also, one thing on 7A. This is the last thing I have.
Okay.
It says, "Adopt a position, description for an existing position, senior department specialist." At the head of the agenda writing slip, it says, "Department Maintenance." I think that's just a typo, and just want the public to know that it is with the assessors.
It's in the assessor, yeah.
So you might have caught that, too.
Yeah.
And we have our fingers crossed with two presentations today with Lone Rock Timber, Lone Rock Resources, and also, Association of Oregon Counties, Adam, excuse me, Andy Smith on the water. So that remains to be seen if our go-to meetings can work today. And a special thanks also to Couscurey for, on very short notice, recovering for us here. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'll just, James, if you can hear me, if, and maybe come out and answer this question, if we can do presentations with go-to meeting, if that's in your scope of, um, a-
I got a feeling, that's a good question, but I got a feeling it's just gonna pop up on the screen when they call in.
Okay.
And I was also trying to be very much aware of the Board's time, other people we have here today. We have the sheriff here, we have the roadmaster here, we have a lieutenant, other peoples that we would, that may be planning, oh, excuse me, Treasure Barns.
Yep.
So I tried to set up with Lone Rock right at 9:45. If we can get close to that, would be very helpful. And then I delayed the Association of Oregon Counties' presentation with Andy Smith till 10:30. I think that's gonna work with breaks and everything else that we're dealing with today. So that's my wish to the Board here.
Try to get it, try to make it happen.
Lone Rock is which item on here?
Is six, presentation 6D.
Okay, 6D.
At 9:15, did you say? 9:45.
Uh, 9:45?
9:45.
See what happens.
So, um-
One more thing. Did we, did we get that email from them with the document? Thank you, Staff Jesuit, sorry for that interruption, Mr. Chair.
Chris, you got anything?
No, sir.
Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say yes.
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 Motion carries three to zero. Election of Board of Commissioners Officers for 2022.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna move to, I'm gonna nominate you as Chair for the 2022 year.
Okay.
Chair.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to nominate knucklehead John Herzog as Commissioner Chair again for another year. And all in favor, say yes?
Yes, yes.
Motion carries two to zero. I'll abstain from that one. So all we need is a vice chair. And if I don't hear anything, I'll nominate Chris as vice chair. And look for a second.
I'll second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes? Abstain or vote no?
No.
Motion carries two to zero. That's done. Public comments?
Can I do my letter, Mr. Chair?
Oh, sure. Yep, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I said I would do that, and I forgot.
I'm gonna do the COVID report first. You know, we have citizen Clay that is very dedicated to continuous research. He couldn't be here today, and I told him I would be glad to offer the report in his words. And I did mention that I would be abbreviating a little bit. It's not that it's too long, but some of the information, I think, has already been well-stated. So he starts off, Curry County is the 27th largest county in Oregon, which is the 27th largest state in the US. Actually, we're the 26th largest county, I think. On August 17th, this is fairly important here, on August 17th, 2021, Curry County had the highest number of daily new cases per 100,000 in Oregon, ranked ninth in percent of positive infections, and ranked 14th in fully vaccinated citizens. Curry County ended 2021 ranked 34th in daily new cases per 100K. So this last week, transmissions have gone from around three per day to almost seven per day. The county ranks 35th in the positive infection rate, and 23rd in fully vaccinated people at 53.3%. And we've all been following this, I believe, that Curry County has, since the very beginning of the pandemic now, has 40 deaths, and 70% of those have been since the middle of August. So we have some people out now, I don't wanna mention their names, but we have some extra reason for caution within the annex here. And so I made up my mind that after I heard Scott Godlieb, somewhat second in command of the US Center for Disease Control, say, "Mask do no good." And finally come to that admission, he said unless you have an N95, which is basically what the surgeons wear. But the Omnicron is very minute, and so, do the mask help stop those? I don't know. So I'm gonna go back to wearing the mask until I feel like it's not in the best interest of all the people that I'm around on a daily basis. Oregon Department of Transportation, First Responders regarding tough early winter road conditions pull altogether. We're only into the third week of our winter season. I'd like to give a big shout-out to the Oregon Department of Transportation, all of our first responders, Curry Road Department, search and rescue, and law enforcement personnel. We've witnessed throughout southern Oregon, and especially our five-county region, the strong collective effort from all of these managers and their staff as they consistently deal head-on with the bad weather-affected roadways. Just like our various levels of firefighting departments that team up during fire seasons, we've watched the multi-agency assist, particularly during the recent major storm events. All have been very impressive. Many thanks to those men and women that worked in the rain, the snow, and the cold. And of course, overcoming the terrible road conditions. All of our travelers, citizens, and visitors are the beneficiaries of the great local successes when maintenance staff and equipment operators combine bringing the quickest possible repairs. Those results are effective, efficient, and solid as their mission is to keep our pavements well-maintained, open, clear, and safe. The team does it very well, and it has become a source of pride for Oregon. I believe we need to cheer them on as more inclement weather and difficult road conditions are likely coming our way in the winter weeks ahead. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll go now to public comments, and Connie Hunter is first.
Happy New Year. I'm Connie Hunter, and I'm a proud citizen of Curry County. Thank you for the COVID report. In addition to dealing with COVID and the issues around vaccination and all of the health issues, there's always been a piece of the puzzle that's been about mental health. And I ran fair and square face into it when a long COVID-related suicide took place. And our work at the Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council led us to be right there in almost communication with that person. Okay, so we've had a rough end of the year. We look forward to this new year. I wanna talk a little bit about pandemic burnout among medical and mental health practitioners. It's a real deal. I had several calls over the holidays regarding that. And I want us to dig deep into knowing that the whole scientific community is dealing with steps of what the future will look like for workforce in healthcare. And I wanted to just put some thought into that, be mindful of what that means. But also, when our workforce is being sent away from Curry County, especially in the area of our nursing school, because the nursing school is being halved, and Curry Campus is no longer gonna host a second year of the nursing school, and the budget continues to be whittled down again, it's not just a problem for the campus. It is the whittling down of an anchor institution of economic development, community development, and that includes housing and workforce development. Those are all important dominos, as are other skilled-building efforts that community colleges and services are delivered. Normally academic classes, even community development classes. For example, our nonprofits could benefit by training in ethics and things like that. Vocational classes have never been really developed at all, even though there have been opportunities that were passed over. Community colleges also provide a measure of leadership development. And when you take that layer out, you take away a layer of community development and economic development and personal development. We start to not have clear understandings of things like ethics versus laws. For example, just because there's a job description of an officer at a county that's in statute doesn't mean that that other layer, that other bumper in your bowling lanes called ethics shouldn't be in place. It just helps you get more strikes and hit the mark more often. So I'm suggesting a couple of things, social media policies. We need to build in more training and understanding of accommodation and inclusion versus political sparring and putting us in a position of being in dichotomous thinking all the time. PTSD is something that I work with every day, because I work with veterans every day. We have a lot of PTSD tendencies and possible PTSD that's developing in our behaviors as a community, as individuals, and in our teamwork even. The tendency to have dichotomous thinking is something that we really need to take a hold of and break down that stranglehold. A veteran who spoke at a training that I was involved in said he understood his dichotomous thinking to be so exaggerated that if you had a difference of opinion, he wanted to beat you up. And I don't want us to ever get in that position. And when I'm in a meeting, and enforcement of Robert Rules of Orders in a committee meeting ends up where a committee member calls law enforcement rather than maintain the integrity of the group and just settle down, we have some issues. So I'm asking for a number of things here. Continue that commitment to our veterans, service members, and their families that we had in 2021. That we all take a deep breath and let cooler heads prevail. And if you have a chance, take a good look at what's going on at the college and what you'd like to see going on at that college. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
As Ms. Hunter walks away, I just wanna let the community know there are currently things being done, working with some agencies on the college, and also another college, and possible redistricting of that. So there are things in the works for the failures of this current SWAC campus that we have, and this Board is working on that.
Very good. Thank you. Nancy Sue Rose, please.
I'm Nancy Sue Rose. I live in Nasika Beach. Happy New Year to you, too.
Thanks.
And I wanted to thank John Herzog for continuing to be Chair. I think you run the meetings very well, and I really appreciate that, and I know a lot of other people do, too. And I wanted to just reiterate about cases of COVID. Cases doesn't necessarily mean sickness, because they don't give us that information. And it just means that there's a lot more testing. And although they're, the United States does not publish, when people are tested and are positive with COVID, the United States doesn't differentiate it between those that are sick and those that are in the hospital with COVID, but Canada does. And I doubt that Canada cases and illness is much different than ours. And in Canada, it is now that the vaccinated are now testing positive more than the unvaccinated. And also, in the hospital, there are now, in Canada, there are more positive testing in the hospitals than there are vaccinated, than there are the unvaccinated. So we have crossed that tipping point. So it's really hard now for people to insist that people be vaccinated and that they, and those who want a vaccine mandate to restrict unvaccinated people from participating in society. That should now go away, because we have, it doesn't matter whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated. You're gonna get COVID if you're gonna get it, if you don't keep up your health, or if you, you know, whatever reason. So I just wanted to bring that up. Thanks.
Thanks, Nancy Sue. Lieutenant Joel Hensley is next. Oh, no, okay. We'll swap here. John Ward, Sheriff John Ward.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Being that it is the first of the year, I just wanted to give a status update on some of our accomplishments we've had over the years, or this year, maybe a little bit beyond. Excuse me. This by no means is a complete list of what we have done and what we do on a daily basis. Just in this past year and a little beyond, under my leadership as sheriff, we've replaced microwaves, sun towers, upgrading due to beyond-life equipment that is not supported by the manufacturer. Communication in this county for law enforcement and first responders was in jeopardy, failing altogether. Upgrading our dispatch consoles, which is a backbone of our communications, this is an ongoing replacement at this time. The current dispatch consoles and equipment is way beyond the life expectancy and is not supported by the manufacturer. We've been living on replacement parts and borrowed time. We have acquired a body scanner for the jail, which is effectively, will effectively stop a lot of the contraband from getting inside the jail, making it safer for our deputies and the adults that are already in custody. Lieutenant Hensley will elaborate on that a little bit here in a few minutes. We acquired a snowcat this past year that has already been used in search near Snow Camp and a successful rescue on Bear Camp of a family of four that had three dogs, two little kids, two-year-old and a three-year-old, and they were stuck way up on Bear Camp Road. Our SAR people were able to reach him with the snowcat and get them out of there. It has also been used to transport day wireless technicians, as recently as yesterday, up to Bosley Tower over snow-covered and tree-covered roads, deal with the radio problems we're having. This saved the county $300 an hour for a full day if they would have had to get their own snowcat, or cat, or whatever to get up there. They would have billed us for that, but we were able to get them up there. Our SAR team has had several successful rescues and saved lives this past year. Our deputies, SAR team, and myself spent four days, starting December 30th, searching for an Agnes man that became missing. It reported he got, last was seen December 23rd, but they found his dog on the highway up there on the 30th. It gave us a kind of a starting point to look. We searched for three, four days. We gave up our New Year celebrations. I was there with them every day. And on January 2nd, we found the gentleman deceased, and were able to get him out of there and provide closure to the family. We upgraded our duty weapons, switching from .40 cal to 9mm, making it cost savings for ammunition use. And over a period of time, it's gonna save the county quite a bit of money. The 9mm's are more effective and easier for our deputies to handle and shoot and be accurate with. Our deputies have been outfitted with proper equipment this year, more that makes their job a lot safer when dealing with violent criminals. We took back emergency services and hired an experienced person who has been trying to catch up on all required state plans, including the natural hazard mitigation plan, that is beneficial to the entire community and community partners. We've built up staffing levels, even though the difficulties and hurdles of nationwide shortages of manpower. We still have a few to go, but the recruitment and retention still remains very difficult. Our K-9 program is still very effective, even though the Measure 110 set all of Oregon law enforcement back. They continue to train every week and are ready for deployment. We have stayed within budget, I have, since I have been sheriff, and before and always became, came in under budget. As far as the cases we've handled this past year, we had 12,357 calls for service in our office. 2,320 were deputy-initiated calls, and for a total of 14,677 calls for service. And we have taken 1,323 criminal cases that we've investigated over this past year. Those who don't know or generally what we do on a daily basis have no clue what we do. And I wanna make sure that everybody knows that we are doing the best we can with the resources we have. And we will continue to do so as long as I'm sheriff. That's my main goal. It's a prior, the main priority the county should be facing or having as their main priority is having safe public health, or public safety. And I'm gonna have Joel elaborate on some of the other things that he's, we've done as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Morning, Joel.
Morning.
Get organized here.
Lieutenant Joel Hensley, jail commander, Curry County. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners, for listening to me this morning.
Could you pull that mic up? I'm sorry.
Hold the mic up?
Yeah, better. Thank you.
Yeah, it seems kinda quiet today for whatever reason. So just like Sheriff said, wanna give you an update of where we're at, set for the year, kinda like the state of the Sheriff's Office. 2021 was definitely a challenging year. Your jail was able to navigate the COVID pandemic by adapting the best we can, by coming up with screenings, daily screenings, temperature checks, staying in touch with our medical staff, all without any assistance from our local public health. We've been able to do this weekly. I have a meeting with the jail commanders. Right now, it's occurring. And we discuss these topics. Everybody always goes back to consult with your local public health authority, you know? And so I do consult with the state the best we can, but the resources here are very, very limited. But I do have to say, my medical staff that we hire, I believe, has done an amazing job. They're staying on top of CDC regulations, guidance, coming up with a plan for us. We run a 14-day cohort quarantine, so we bring people in. As long as they're not violent with others, we'll keep them together in a group. So if there is an exposure, we have lessened that exposure, hopefully mitigating as much liability to the sheriff and the county as we can, and protecting those that we have in custody and our deputies. I don't think there's a plaque for it, but I've been told this numerous times this year. With all the outside architects who are inside the facility, we have been called the worst-designed jail in the history of ever. But we do receive a compliment on the back end of that, is that they are amazed of what we do and how we do it, how we make the facility work with the minimal staffing, and how we can keep everybody safe. We did secure funding, and at no cost to the county, and purchased a body scanner valued at $180,000. The training, installation, everything was completely free. Federal government did pay for it, however, it was no cost to the county. And we have discovered contraband. We have stopped drugs from coming into the facility. I also, well, not I, the jail, negotiated at no cost to the county with tablets for the adults in custody. So those things are costly, but we were able to negotiate a deal with our phone provider to be able to find video visitation, education, entertainment, and stuff. It's all PG, but they can send text messages, they can send emails. We do, we have a blacklist of, they have certain words they won't allow. They'll kick it back, send it to us. We can have internal discipline for those matters. But the reality is, everybody does texting. Nobody talks on a phone anymore. So this here is a more adaptable way for people to communicate with loved ones, especially during the pandemic. Back in the beginning, we started, developed a critical supply plan to so that we never run out of our essentials. So cleaning supplies always made sure that we had adequate stock, gloves. I became a glove broker for a while. I was calling and trying to get shipping containers here and there. Found out that they were actually auctioning off shipping containers with gloves at Long Beach. They would deliver it, they would give it to whoever had the most money in hand.
Oh.
So, but we were able to keep that up, so we never had to rely on others. We always made sure we had plenty of gloves, masks, supplies for the inmates and staff, including food. We did, we were able to pull off a successful transport and provide security for a Measure 11 inmate that had a legitimate medical emergency and had to be flown to Eugene. He was there for a week. The corporal and I were able to get over there, keep him safe, keep staff safe, and get him back safely, all at no cost to the county for the medical care. I was able to apply and obtain OHP emergency assistance. So the flight, air ambulance, ambulance to our hospital, our hospital bill, and Sacred Heart's bill was at no cost to the county. Recently, we completed our Oregon State Sheriff's Association jail inspection. We have 316 full compliance standards. One standard that was non-compliant, which we've mitigated and came up with a training plan. It was regards to fire drills and fire training, and we had missed our mark on hitting them quarterly. So we came up with a mitigation plan, and we've fixed that. So, and then we have two standards not compliant. The Oregon State Sheriff's jail inspection, as you're aware, is over 300 standards that cover everything from inmate care, discipline, clothing, the standards that are set up by ORS, religious, everything you can think of. The jail standards cover, and treatment, how we run things, and things that they're allowed. So that happens every two years. It's an audit from outside people. I believe we had eight inspectors here from eight different counties. we had eight inspectors here from eight different counties, um, representing. Get that paper here. Multnomah County Sheriff's Office, Lynn County Sheriff's Office, Clamath County Sheriff's Office, Lane, Deschutes and again, Multnomah. So they all came to our facility, not never being here. And then they, they applied the standards to what we do. We have to provide proof that we do these things. We have to show in action that we do these things. We did receive a conclusion report and at the bottom, um, Commander, uh, Jeff Wheeler wrote, he's from Multnomah. Uh, the inspectors found the Curry County Jail clean, quiet, orderly and adequately maintained for its age. I would be amiss in my report if I didn't make mention that the age of this facility is well past its lifespan. Additionally, the design, or should I say the significant lack of adequate design is extremely restrictive and thus by its na- very nature limits the jail's ability to officer, office, offer the necessar- necessary, needed programming, classification, housing options required for a jail built in 2021. The inmates were very well behaved, compliant, respectful and well-cared-for. The staff was professional, cooperative and knowledgeable in their areas of responsibility and regarding appropriately and responded appropriately when addressing policies and procedure questions. During the course of our inspection, we spoke with command, corporal, deputies and inmates. I'm very pleased to report that we found your facility be operating well within the guidelines of the Oregon jail standards. Thank you for your gracious hospitality that was shown during our visit inspection. Your staff was open with us in discussing jail operations, embraced the inspection process and everyone worked to ensure that we had what we needed throughout the entire inspection process. I think that's quite huge.
Yeah.
That's coming from an agency that he probably has 15 lieutenants. I have 15 staff members total, including me. So I think that's huge in itself.
Yeah.
Um, both of my corp, uh, corrections corporals are certified trainers and in regards to how to be a field training officer. So we can train our own officers to be field training officers here. That includes patrol and corrections, uh, dispatch, parole probation and other agencies in our area. Um, we've done a lot more long-distance transports due to COVID because other people aren't participating in the shuttle. Um, can see, we've seen a continued increase in violent people suffering from mental health and/or a combination of substance abuse issues, especially, uh, after the passive, uh, passion of, uh, one-ten. It, uh, it's not having the effect that, uh, I think the voters intended. Um, Corporal Crone is currently the co-chair of the Oregon State, uh, Transport Association and I'm the co-vice chair of the Oregon Jail Commander Association, also a subject matter expert for Legislative Subcommittee on AIC Healthcare Standards. So that's the jail in a nutshell.
Thank you, Joel. Any questions for Joel?
Just quickly, Lieutenant, uh, you mentioned, uh, reference Jeff Wheeler?
Yes.
I assume he's pretty familiar with many of the jails in Oregon. So his, uh, his recommendation would be based on greatly on experience and, and knowledge of what we have in the state.
Yeah, Jeff, uh, Captain Wheeler's been to, uh, numerous facilities. He did say he's never been to ours. This was his first time here, but, uh, Captain Wheeler's been an inspector. I just realized I've been doing this seven years. So he's been at least five years that I believe he's been an inspector. So he's been around to different facilities at least once a year. So, yes.
And he's with Multnomah County Sheriff's?
Multnomah County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Joel, real quick, do you?
Yes, sir.
Are, are they allowed to have visitors or are you just doing it through that notebook?
We're, right now due to COVID, um, to be fair to everyone, I can't open up visitation because we don't want our lobby full of people.
Gotcha.
Um, I can't, we can't co-mix housing areas. So I was trying to come, come up with a plan that we would, you know, do a daily rotation, but with our, like, one day would be one dorm would have visitation. Maybe we could, you know, get that through with appointments and stuff. However, we tend to move whole housing areas in groups now. So I'm, I was afraid of one housing group getting three or four visitation trips a week and no one else would. So I, I, I do, under certain circumstances, allow a, a, one visit. Um, somebody's going, um, unfortunately to prison for a long time. They want to see people before they go or a very sick founding member. Um, I can make arrangements for those issues, but not as a standard thing. However, we have negotiated with our provider to provide 15 minutes of free phone calls twice a week.
Okay.
Um, so I do, we do allow that. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Uh-huh.
Hey, and I, did you have a question? And Sheriff, I apologize. I didn't ask if anybody had a question for the sheriff up here. I guess not. I think you guys did a great job.
It's fine with me.
Appreciate you guys and all you do. And I'm sorry about the conditions, but, um, yeah, well, we're working on that. So last one is Brett Cecil from Port Orford.
Good morning, Commissioners. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Good to see you all. Um, I was glad to see today coming from Port Orford that our roads all look really good. Thank you, Commissioner Boyce for recognizing our road crews, ODOT and county and city. Unbug Mountain looked pretty clear.
Yeah.
Nice little herd of elk down on Arizona beach I saw. So, and crew's out cutting wood along the highway in, in Nescia Beach. So it looks like everybody's back at work. We're working hard. And I want to thank Mr. Clay for his reports through Commissioner Boyce. Um, his, his numbers, his stats and his stories that he tells, I think are really important for all of us to see and hear. I'm not seeing that our COVID situation is going in a really positive direction. I don't know that I even need to bring that up or get into stats at this point. I do want to mention something. I, a story I was watching on the news this morning. In the city of Philadelphia, a row house catching fire during the night and actually killing a number of people. I think it was 13 people at last count, children and adult family members. Turns out four of their smoke detectors had been inspected. Apparently the batteries were let run out or weren't operational. It seems really awful to me that something as simple and as ubiquitous as a smoke detector can lead to the deaths of humans, deaths that are really unnecessary. And I unfortunately see that happening. I'm going to draw the analogy back to our COVID vaccinations. These are things we could use. They're ubiquitous in our environment now, in our governments and in our schools. Everywhere we go, they're available to us. It's just another layer on top of the mask that I wear, the vaccinations that we have available. I think we need to all use all the layers we can, just like when are we dressing layers to stay warm? I think we need to use all of our layers to protect ourselves. So I just want to throw that out to everyone here and anyone listening. It's up to us to protect ourselves, just as it's up to us to make our choices about whether we vaccinate ourselves or not. I think we need to protect ourselves. I'm very concerned with the future of our hospital situations and our healthcare workers. And I'm concerned that we may end up in a, in a space where we're going to have to be checking people for vaccinations before they come into hospitals. Are we going to be turning people away that haven't taken care of themselves, coming in at the last minute, demanding space in hospitals where people who have cardiac conditions or other situations that need emergency treatment can't receive care because our hospitals are full of people who unnecessarily are having COVID infections? Again, I want to reiterate, reiterate my recommendation that I made that our county website have at least a link on the landing page to where we can find testing, where we can find vaccination locations in the communities where we live. This is something I think can be handled really simply at the county level. We have the capability. I just don't see it being done. So I want to leave you with that. Ask again that you take that consideration into mind. And I'll look forward to seeing that link come up on the webpage. Thank you, sirs. Any questions? I'm here.
Just one quick comment. Maybe you heard this news, but, uh, two, two quick things Mr. Clay mentioned. On the crone was 94.5% of the actual cases. So it seems to be drowning out the Delta variant a little bit. That's, that's the general consensus. And, uh, there are bad news here. If you haven't heard, the country of France now has a new variant, apparently, IHU. So I, I told Mr. Clay I would be happy to, uh, communicate that to everyone. Thank you, mister.
And if I may, I believe we're going to continue to see variants. Every single time that we have an infection, every cell in your body that creates new virus from the virus that you take in, every one of those replications is an opportunity for a mutation. So every person that gets infected is one more opportunity for another variant. And just keep extending and keep extending. Everyone's burned out. Everyone's tired of hearing about COVID, but it's not done with us. So please take that into consideration. Protect yourselves. Thank you.
Alrighty.
Mr. Chair, if I may introduce, uh,
Jerry O'Sullivan?
Yes, Chief, uh, Regional Business Operations. Welcome.
Good morning.
Thank you for the letter you sent, uh, last week on the 12th.
Yeah, we gave out a quick update about what we were working on and where we were, uh, before we got started. Now we've officially gotten started. There's bumps. Um, you know, I wish it were all smooth sailing. We try to plan for that, but everything kind of changes once we start uh, implementing a plan. Things are working. We have a phone number up and running. Had some glitches with that the first couple of days. Um, staff are now, uh, working for us. They've come over from CCH. So that's, uh, that's working great. We have a great team. Uh, they're learning a new system for collecting data, which is slower and of course, because it's new to them, uh, but they'll get that. Uh, so we're in that stage where it's a little bumpy and, uh, we're still trying to figure out all the details about how people are going to do things, but we're getting there. We had an issue last night. We, um, just, one of those bumps, we had somebody vandalized, uh, the clubhouse, which thank you for providing the clubhouse for us, but we had a window broken. Um, so we've had, the first thing they got to do this morning was deal with that situation, but we'll get it taken care of. And, um, a few other things going on out there. So, you know, the daily life stuff, uh, still goes along and throws us a curveball once in a while.
Yep.
Any questions for me at this point?
We're glad Curry County's working out well for you.
Yep. Thank you. We're, we are hitting the ground running, but, uh, you know, we have a lot of pieces to try to pull together. So I'll be, I'll be able to come back and give you some data as we go along. Right now I, I don't have data. I just, we started. We've got things going.
Just be sure to reach out if you need, you know, uh, anything we can do to help. Be sure, would.
He wanted your cell number, by the way.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll, I'll get that.
I, I won't announce it to everybody because I get a lot of calls, but, uh, I'll write on a piece of paper and hand it to you here.
No, that's fine. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You betcha.
So Mr. Chair, we're up against the clock here and we have, uh, the Barnes consumption tax presentation next. I wonder if we could just take a moment and see if the virtual go-to system is going to click on here for the Lone Rock, uh, Resources presentation. And maybe it would be, uh, the best interest of everyone to just switch the Barnes presentation with the Lone Rock. So could we?
Well, Dave, what do you?
They're going to come on right at nine forty-five.
I know, but I think.
These are two people all the way from Roseburg. That, that is an issue with you, sir?
Of course not. Whatever it takes to accommodate you, Commissioner Boyce is fine with me.
Well, why don't you just go ahead and come on up now? I, I have no issues, Mr. Chair. That was, that was uncalled for. That was a simple, reasonable request, Joel.
They all are.
I have no idea how to make this work.
Anthony, do you? I don't know. Brad Ricker, are you, are you listening to this? Do you know how to make this, uh, scanner?
I can go without it. It, it'll be all right. Um, David Barnes, I'm the county treasurer. Um, for a couple of years now, there's been talk around the county about having a consumption tax. Um, but nothing has really been done about it. Um, so after the last meeting, I took the challenge of figuring out a consumption tax for this county. One of the things that has always been brought up and Commissioner Herzog, you brought it up yourself, is how we do this without affecting the people of this county and how we affect, how we get money from tourists, basically. Um, so what I've done, I started with the United States Census data. And according to the census data, we get, um, it, it, let me give you a copy of this.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Dave.
This shows a breakdown.
This, this, uh, this is directly from the United States Census. This shows a breakdown of household expenditures in our county by year. And according to the census, our count, uh, each of our households spends approximately $60,000 a year on different things. What I've done is gone through this list and I've pulled out things that number one are non, that I consider to be non-essential items, um, entertainment and stuff. And number two are things that tourists come here and spend money on. So as you'll see, we have alcohol on there. We have household apparel and services, which includes gift shops in my mind. We have dining out. We have, um, hair care products and we have vehicle maintenance. And the total of that comes to $5,800, $5,800 a month or a year, which works out to about, uh, nine percent, nine and a half percent of normal household spending. So now, uh, when you take into account all of those things, the next thing I did was I looked at a report by Dean Runyon, who issued a statewide report on the economics of tourism spending. And according to their report, there's a, uh, somewhere approximately $200 million a year is spent in this county by tourists. So my idea for a consumption tax is to, if we apply a two percent tax to $200 million a year, that generates 400, that generates $4 million. Let me give you this as well.
Thank you.
I'm not a specialist on tax law, but I know that Oregon State has a kicker. And what my recommendation is, is that the, is that the consumption tax that is collected by this county, the 55% of it go to the county general fund, 35% of it become the Curry kicker, which gets returned to the citizens of the county and 10% of it is, remains for administration and collection fees. If you look at the page that I just gave you, if we collect $4 million in taxes, that will put $2.2 million back into general fund of this county. Later on today, you're going to be having a meeting about the lack of revenue in our $2 million shortfall and talking about protecting the road fund. This is a plan that provides you with that $2.2 million that you need. This is perpetual. This is self-sustaining. It's non-regressive. It does not, it is, it is a non-regressive, um, consumption tax, which is very rare. You know, most of the time, consumption taxes affect the poor and the lower end of the economic spectrum more than they do the rich. This, but by providing a kicker in this, this does the opposite. It provides a, a, it, it's a progressive tax where people who spend more pay more, rather than the people who spend less pay, paying more of their, of their money towards the tax. Um, if you look at the very bottom of this, if we collect 200 million, if we have $200 million worth of tourist sales and we collect $4 million on that, a family of four will receive back $254 in the kicker. Um, that's after paying $116 approximately in consumption taxes over the course of the year, based on five percent, based on two percent of the $5,800 from the first page that I gave you. So this will not cost the people of Curry County anything. Um, the kicker is applied. We would have, on $200,000, we would end up with a $1.4 million kicker. The idea for that is to return that to the people of this county. We have approximately 22,000 people in this county, according to the census, which would be $63.64 per person or for a family of four, $254. The way I envision this is that when this, this would need to come up as a ballot measure. Uh, when you vote on it on the ballot, if you vote yes, you are registered and you receive, a form gets created and you become registered to receive the kicker. Um, like I said, it would be 22,000 shares that this comes out to. People would, if people did not, if, if only 15,000 people signed up for this and wanted to get their money back, I propose that the other 7,000 shares go directly to the sheriff's department. Um, that's just, you know, that's the funding that we need. That's a perpetual source of funding for the sheriff. Yes, it will decline as more people register. I've also, uh, toyed with the idea of making it so that people can automatically donate their, um, donate their kicker to a local group, be it a housing group, a veterans group or something like that. No, this is not going to be easy. Nothing that's, that's worthwhile ever is. This is going to take a lot of work to get this done. It's going to take a lot of work to implement it, but that's why I'm leaving 10% as administrative costs. Um, it's going to require action by the clerk's office. It's going to require action by finance, by the treasurer's department. There's a lot of work that's going to get involved and be involved in implementing this. But I haven't heard any other ideas come out and this one works and it doesn't cost the people of Curry County anything. And that was the biggest thing, with the biggest holdback to, to having a tax is that the people won't vote for more taxes. Well, this one is one that doesn't cost them anything and I really think that we could, people would get behind this. I've spoken to a half a dozen people out on the street about this and every single one of them said, yes, please do it. You know, personally myself, I'm opposed to it. I, I love going to the store, picking up something that says $4.99 on it and handing them a $5 bill, getting my penny. getting my penny and putting it in a penny jar. I don't want to have to take 10 cents out of that jar to pay the tax on. But if that's what, but this county needs the revenue. We, there is no other revenue sources out there. It's been, I've been coming to budget committee meetings for five or six or seven years now, six years probably, and no one has proposed a perpetual, self-sustaining revenue stream to increase the county's revenues. And I, I feel that that's what I'm giving you here. I also, if you wanted to consider it, I've also worked out the numbers for a three percent tax. You'll see on, you'll see on the pages that I've given you that I've worked it out for $100 million worth of sales, 200 million and 300 million. As I stated earlier, the Dean Runyon report estimate puts our sales somewhere in the $200 million neighborhood. But I provided you with these other numbers so that you can see if it's $150 million worth of sales, you can average between the 100 and the 200. If we do 250, you can go between the 200 and 300. And it gives you an idea to figure out a little bit better of what we're going to get from this. Um, what I'm looking for today, I guess, is a commitment from this board that, um, this is an idea that you would like to follow up on and it's something that you think that you might be, uh, willing to go forward with. And if you, if I get that consensus from you, I will put together a committee and we will work on this and develop it. We have until, um, the November general election to get something put together. I don't think this is a primary ballot issue, but we have until the November general. So we have some time to work on this and put this together. And that time we used to hammer out the things that would be taxable versus non-taxable. Um, and worked and finalized the numbers on things and get a better understanding. This is just a top-level presentation. This is, I, like I said, I've spent the last couple of weeks since the last board meeting and, and thought about this and worked on it and did some stuff. The numbers have just come to me recently. I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to put it together and do it as a PowerPoint that I could put up on the screen. But, um, you're looking for revenue? Here it is. If, you know, I, I don't know what else to say about it. So.
Question?
You're aware that California's paying in sales tax almost 10%, right?
Yes.
So what part of this have you included, uh, from the Delnor County shoppers that come over into Brookings primarily to shop at Buy Mart, buy fuel, certainly Fred Meyer? They would be included?
Yes.
Okay. Um, on the, the luxury items you mentioned here, I don't see recreational marijuana on there. Should it be? And this is from a national data, uh, collection?
As I said, sir, I pulled that from the United States Census page. They did not list the information.
Okay. But we would want to include that, I would assume.
We certainly would, yes.
Okay. Would you, some of the plan that I've put up is, uh, other than, other than law enforcement, with that kind of money and the dispersment of it. One of them was tourism promotion because you're obviously going to get a little bit of a feedback from, you know, the travelers and the people, as you said, it's a very complex system and it'd be a lot of work to, to bring our people, all of our vendors and shops and restaurants and, and all the above. I'm not, that doesn't bother me. I think if we sell the plan on the basis, what you just communicated, I, I think that, uh, it's not going to be as hard to sell as generally speaking a tax. And we're all in agreement that a property tax is going nowhere. We're all in agreement until we get our financial, uh, program in, in order here at the county level. So we develop the trust where, you know, if commissioners say we want to promote the Barnes project, uh, sales tax project, consumption tax project, it may, it may lose a little bit of credibility. Uh, the plan I had had public safety, public health, tourist promotion, road department, payback and reserves. Um, I'm questioning your numbers a little bit on the 200 million, only being three or four million, but I, I want to do the math on that. I know it is, the, the plan I had was right at 3 million at one and a half percent. And that was also, by the way, based on non-labeled foods, uh, because you also mentioned exemptions. You mentioned, uh, uh, you know, we've talked over the years about real estate, you know, anything under 250,000 for, for first-time home buyers could be exempted. There's just a, there's a lot of things to work out there, but, uh, I'm glad to hear you say that, yes. Delnor County, that's about 40% of what, what could be generated there as tourism A compared to tourism B. That, that used Curry County as a destination location. So, um, certainly have my support. Um, I would want to really have a lot of community and committee involvement in how we spend that. You know, because again, uh, it's, you need to get a lot of input. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Chris?
If I might, um, to address one of your points, Commissioner Boyce, um, we implemented the TLT tax, to, uh, the transient lodging tax a couple of years ago. And when we did that, the amount that we're collecting is what, 200 or 300% of what we originally anticipated. So there's been a flood of money coming into tourism, um, and promotion. What I'm looking to do with this, what the board should be looking to do with this is to plug the hole in the general fund. You know, that's where our problem is. We're going, we're going to have, you know, budget meetings last year, there was a $2 million hole. Um, uh, Mr. Ruck, Ricker spoke about it a couple of weeks ago at a meeting. That's what I'm looking to do here is to plug that $2 million hole in our budget, in our general fund. And this does that perpetually. It's, it's an, it's a, it's a self-sustaining as long as people keep coming here. You mentioned the people in California with their eight, nine or 10% tax. They're, they're not going to shy away from this 8% difference if they come up here.
They're still going to save.
It's still a savings for them. So it's, and like I said, the biggest thing about this, I, one thing I know about Curry history is that the people of Curry County will not vote for a tax. But this is a tax that they won't have to pay. You know, and it might even put a dollar or two back in their pockets at the end of the day. So, you know, it's, we talk about tourism and the benefits of tourism to Curry County. Tourism benefits people in the tourism industry and it doesn't really benefit the people of the county themselves. We deal with the influx of people every summertime. But this is something that, you know, shows the people, it, it shows the people of this county that we're thinking about them and, and we want to, and we, we understand their concerns. Uh, you know, we're an economically depressed county. Whatever we can do to help the people out here is, you know, we would pay this off once a year. It's, you know, what, as, you would have to register, you register an account and it's going to take some work. I mean, it's not a simple thing to do, but with this board's consent and with this board's approval of the, of the basics of the idea, like I said, I'd like to move forward with it. I, I'm kind of really stuck on the 55, 35, 25. I really believe that's the only way to sell this to the people. So, um, but if the three of you consent, I, I will move forward. I'll put together a committee on this and we'll start doing the work on it and I'll report back to you as we make progress.
I just have one slight disagreement and that is that, uh, it doesn't benefit the citizens in general. Okay, indirectly, I believe it does as the dollars rotate. I think that's pretty common. But it also, uh, I think somewhat to your point, it does demand, tourism does demand more from our services, especially code enforcement, law enforcement, public health, public safety, all the rest. So yes, that's, that's all I wanted to add.
I think it's a very good start, Dave. I, I think, uh, Dan DeYoung is a county commissioner in Josephine County. And he's asked, uh, I saw him a couple of weeks ago in Roseburg, if he could come over and do a, a presentation. It's somewhat like this with just different nuances. And so I think we're, we're, we got a good start and I appreciate this and your work on it and, uh, like, you know, that, that, you know, I've lived here as, as long as anybody else and, and you're, we all know that I, with that, that tax, T-A-X is a four-letter word in Curry County. And, uh, so this is something that.
That was what I, that was what I approached it from. Like you had said last week, you want one that we're not going to have to pay for, you know, so.
Yeah.
That this is the best I can do on it.
Well, and there's, you know, I think you'll be, you know, when we get, if we, Dan DeYoung said he would come over and do a presentation, you know, somewhat like you did with his sheriff that's in, of Josephine County, a friend of Sheriff Ward's. And, uh, so somewhere in there, we're going to mesh with a, you know.
Yeah, I'd love to speak to him about it and, you know, I'd, I'd love to, I'm, I'm a strange kind of, of, of man. I'm not afraid to stop and ask for directions. So, you know, if I can get somebody to help me, I certainly will. So, you know, if he's willing to assist me and talk to me about this, you know, the more the merrier. But with your permission, I'd like to start putting together a, a group to, to work with me on this and, and move it forward.
I, I am, I have.
The board would need to approve that group, I would assume.
It would just be an ad hoc committee, very informal, that would work with me on this.
Pardon me?
I said, I don't think the board would need to approve a committee.
No, that's, I'm not looking for.
Bring information to the board to decipher.
Yeah, I'm just looking to form an ad hoc. It wouldn't be a formal tax committee of the county. It would just be an ad hoc group of people who I met with who would work with me on this.
And maybe the, uh, thing with Dan DeYoung and the sheriff from Josephine County could be more of a workshop where we could really talk and bed it out and, and pass ideas.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's going to take a lot of refining. Like I told you at the beginning, I'm just trying to get, put out something high level out there that you would, would have the ability that I could move from.
Okay.
So, you know, that's really what I'm looking for. Like I said, you know, it's, it's money for everybody. It's money in the sheriff, in, in sheriff's budget. So it's just, it really helps out everybody, so.
Kind of reminds me of that old song, money for nothing and the rent is free. Remember that?
Yeah. Well, it's not, but, you know, it's going to take a lot of work. It's not for nothing, but, you know, I'm willing to do that if we can, you know, if I can plug the hole by doing this, then, you know, that's, at the end of the day, that's all I care about. I'm not a politician. I'm not running for office. So if people hate me for proposing a tax, so be it, you know, but it really needs to be done.
Yep. Very good.
So, Mr. Chair, before a break here.
Thank you, Dave.
So do I have, I have your consent to go ahead and, and put together people and work on this and bring it back?
You betcha.
Okay.
Head nod, yep.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, we have Lone Rock waiting, uh, but I don't know how to open up the meeting. We had the option on the first one. So James, can you hear us in the famous AV room?
Does anybody know how to do anything here? Hi, James.
Do we, does this show we have another go-to meeting in the waiting room?
Okay.
Do we have a meeting?
I'll put Lone Rock.
Number? Our name, it says, our meeting room name? Does that make sense?
Click on the arrow and get the drop-down menu. It might be listed in there already. Up, 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 up. There you go. Good job there.
Thanks, James. You did good.
Is she in there at 10:04?
We will take a break directly after this presentation. Is that okay? JJ, is that okay?
The law's pretty clear, but that's fine. But if that's your choice. Mr. Gairles, can you hear us okay?
I can.
Oh, okay.
There you go. Thank you. Sorry to keep you waiting. Did we lose?
Thanks, James.
Did we lose Mr. Luther?
Important business to attend to. Uh, I will say that unfortunately Toby had another commitment and had to drop off, so I'll carry forward with the introduction.
Well, I'll introduce you here real quick. Sorry we missed him. I'm going to turn your volume down just a little bit. Can we have a quick test there, please?
You're looking for a test from me?
Yes. We're going to turn you down just a little bit more, but other than that, you're coming in very well. So in 1950, this own family built a sawmill on the bank to the South Oakaw River in Roseburg, Oregon. Full-time employees now. Lone Rock Resources has 110. Uh, been a business in Oregon since 1950. Average employee tenure 18 years. Forest acres owned over 150,000 southwest Oregon. Oregon business best companies recipient, seven different years since, uh, 2000, 2004. Welcome, Mr. Gairles. Thanks for your patience. We are very glad to have you here. And you have, you have Commissioner Pash, Commissioner Herzog and myself, Court Boyce. Thank you again.
Welcome, uh, or thank you for the introduction to my company. Is it possible to either share my screen? I have, uh, five quick slides of who we are, with good pictures of our employees and our lands, uh, or to pull up the presentation that I emailed previously?
It's possible.
We, we've got it right here.
But, yeah, we had a little bit of technical difficulties today, uh, but.
Which, uh, which icon is it?
Brendan?
That one? I should say Lone Rock. Here comes your PowerPoint. I hope we didn't, uh, can you see it from your end?
No, but I don't need to see it. I've got it right here.
There we go.
You guys have it up?
Yeah, we see the first, the first picture.
Ah, okay. So I'll just ask you to change to slides and confirm what slide we're on and, uh, just so you can see some of the things to talk about. So if you switch over to, uh, the next slide with, uh, Fred and Fancis, so I'll give you a little bit of history about our company.
Oh, we just, our screen, forgive us, our screen just went black. Hang on one moment.
Hit the escape button.
Just have one thing more. Couple months ago.
Yep.
Just kept going black to go.
That's gold beach colors, that's. Oh, green too. Brendan, you can still hear us though?
I can.
Okay.
Is this small screen going to work for you guys?
Yeah, yeah, well, anything will work, but.
Could you try right-clicking that mouse and see if anything pops up? That's why we need to get all the system in here. This is just ridiculous. Every month we have a major problem.
Say that again, bud? No, no idea.
Can we shut it down and start over maybe?
There are, uh, there's an option to make me a presenter, um, quickly because I can. And I'm sorry, I'm not very familiar with, uh, this platform. But I can run the PowerPoint presentation from my side too.
You know, we might do is bring you back on the 19th. Would that be a possibility? Rather than hold you up?
I don't believe that, uh.
You just got.
You know, the, the 19th actually could work. Uh, I'm not certain about Toby, uh, or his schedule, but by schedule, we can make that work and I can, uh, see if Toby's available as well.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chair, that's probably what's best here. And, uh, you know, we're sorry, we were going to get you right on at nine forty-five and, uh, we, uh, we did our best there.
No, no worries. Life happens.
So we'll go ahead and cut you loose and we're, we're going to, uh, take a break here and. and we'll be corresponding with you, and our apologies again. We'll, I'll be corresponding with you on regarding the nineteenth.
Thanks, James.
Thanks.
Very good, good, uh, luck to you guys and have a good meeting.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll take a break till, um-
Bye now.
Ten twenty-five, fifteen-minute break. Is it Stephanie?
All right, you're back on.
Oh, hi, hey, welcome back, we are, uh, after a break, take, we're kicking this off again and then we have Pacific High School, uh, leave, public affairs t, uh, class or something out there. Hello! Welcome. As many as can come in. How are you guys doing? So, kids from-
Couple seats over there.
Fort Orford Langloes. And there's the, there's the teacher, hello!
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Do you guys think I have the chair set out open?
Would you mind stepping up to the mic and just kinda introducing what, what's going on and, and, uh, these folks are gonna be in the blue room today and have lunch and, uh, there's a, right, there's a pope right there.
Hello, I'm Phoebe Skinner.
Phoebe-
Resident of Gold Beach, teacher at Pacific High School. And this is our government class, it's made up of juniors and seniors, mostly seniors, getting ready to graduate. We're just over in elections, they're getting ready to vote in May and November-
Okay.
-of this year, and we have two students, um, on exchange as well. So, thank you so much for having us join you today.
Thank you, Phoebe.
Good to see ya. Can we give them a little applause, it, it looks like they're gonna make the twelfth year, right?
Good to have you guys, yeah. Okay, we got a presentation.
Mrs. Skinner, where are we supposed to meet, uh, later today?
Um, we will be meeting in the, we're gonna be going down to the blue room-
Okay.
Um, from eleven thirty to twelve thirty.
Okay.
And then we'll be back there at one thirty, if not a little before then.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
You bet.
Welcome on, thank you. May I, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, welcome. Always good to see you and on short notice and, uh, we have overcome, overcome most of our issues today, so, uh, we'll check your volume here real quick, welcome again.
Thank you, Commissioner, and hello, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Andy Smith from AOC, thank, thank you for having me here today and I'm just looking at my screen, I'm not sure if Harmony Bray is with us yet.
Could you turn your volume down? Can you turn your mic out just a little bit, we've done it from our end.
I will try to do that and I will not to, I'll try not to shout as well.
Stand by just a moment, Andy. Oh, yeah, there we go. I'll add about fifty, I think. Thank you. How about another test?
How, how do you read me now?
Yeah, I'm gonna go down just a little bit more, stand by, please. I think we're getting there. So, would you like to wait for, uh, for Harmony?
Well, what I'd like to do, Commissioners, to make sure it's, that we're using your time well. I can start, I'm gonna text Harmony to make sure she's got, she should have everything she needs, but I'm gonna send her the code that worked for me to get into the meeting and then I can start.
We're still working with the volume just a little bit. Testing. Ten, nine, eight?
How about now?
Better, much better, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna lead off from my board here just a little bit. You know, you came onto the scene of, um, water planning and, uh, we were sad to lose you on the Association of Orange County Veterans, uh, lead person and we just, goodness, really appreciate Andy, all the work he did there over the years. Um, you know, we heard from different Commissioners that are basically taking the lead and put their counties in very good position to prepare for the long-term water needs of their communities. And it has to do with agriculture, uh, certainly all their communities, firefighting, development. Um, and then, uh, I remember Craig Pope from Polk County mentioned, he says, "You know, working with the Oregon Water Resources and Oregon Department of Agriculture, you better get started now, they move pretty slow." And so, um, in our county, figuring out who the stakeholders are, and I just mentioned several of them there, but, uh, certainly agriculture and, and, uh, all the people that, uh, you know, seems to be a greater demand on a, on a shrinking resource, even on the coast of Oregon. So, you had also mentioned, Andy, and I think you've covered this, if you would, um, the, uh, the interest in possibly getting our county on the spring list, uh, so that we can, so we can move forward and not be delayed, and I think there's only room for a few. And if, if I understood that correctly, you could, uh, address that as well. I still don't see, uh, your, your partner, uh, on board, but we'll look for her. Uh, please proceed, thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner Voice, and, uh, I will try not to use a basketball coach's voice, not that I coached for a while, but I used to coach a team for a daughter, so I hope I'm not too loud. So, Commissioner Voice, Harmony has, I can see her on my screen, so I can just witness Harmony. Turn the volume up, see if that's the, I, if you wanna do a bit something, Harmony, please.
Good morning.
Good day.
Okay, I'll keep it out of the flow.
We're, we're just adjusting a little bit more here.
Keep talking.
We'll, we'll set the, uh, we'll set the, uh, like you just went to a rock concert, I don't know what you mean. Something, that's, uh, after you go to a big show. So, sorry if we're a little-
Now, the, the sound is, the, the sound is fine now, so- Hey, all is well, your, your, your audio is very good. And-
And it, it, either way, it's fine, Commissioners, but I'm just checking, can you see Harmony and I, or are we just with you via audio?
We can see you.
Okay. 'Cause I can see Harmony on my end, I see her picture, so I know her video's working for me, but I'll proceed and I, again, very much appreciate this opportunity to be before you today and briefly introduce myself, say you a little bit about what's happening with water in AOC. And then I want Harmony to have a little time with you because she has a tremendous amount of experience in this arena in terms of water planning, uh, recently came from the state and she's gonna talk a little bit about some of the work she's done that's similar but different. It's called place-based water planning. And what I'm gonna talk about in a moment is something called Water Needs Forums. But before I get to that, I just wanted to share a little bit about AOC and what we do with the County Solutions Program. So, uh, I work at AOC, I work for Gina Nichol, is my, she's the executive director of AOC, but I absolutely work for all of you as Commissioners, all six, thirty-six counties are members. So, what I do at County Solutions is we do a little bit of legislative advocacy with the, the other lobbyists, I work with them. But I work, um, across areas, policy areas, on essentially problem-solving that could either be kind of a short-term crisis or it can be kind of more long-term, strategic assistance with counties to get, to get ahead on issues that we know for a lot of reasons are lurking, or certainly on the horizon, and in some places in Oregon, they're, they're not on the horizon, they're right, right in front of them in terms of challenges. So, one of those, uh, that we absolutely believe is continuing to challenge Oregon's counties and will, will be there for some time, decades, I'm sure, uh, would be, would be the issue of water and really of all facets of water, the economic, social, environmental aspects, and how community-based discussions on that can really be the starting point. So, at AOC, we really do believe that on the ground, you as frontline counties are the place to start discussions, uh, on issues. It could be water, it could be housing, but really those discussions should start at the local level and, and then they should kinda meet at some point, and we're partners with the state. But we, we certainly are cautious of efforts of the state, maybe with the best intentions, but when they try to do a bigger, kind of an approach that if, that is really quite a broad brush or really is not linking you as community, as elected leaders and as community members into that process, we think at County Solutions, it's my job to help you seize opportunities to, to jump into that work so you in fact can be helping kinda drive the discussion, uh, on the front lines. So, with regards to water, uh, I'm gonna give you a little bit of context what some other counties have done and then I do wanna go over a handup with you. I, I put some, in fact, if you can read, one is related to ARPOC and some of the dollars that the federal government is, is, uh, that I'm sure you're tracking very closely. But in a moment, I'm gonna walk you through this document, it's called Community Water Needs Forums, uh, very briefly before introducing Harmony. So, one other, to share any other counties that are jumping into this water work, uh, we're very pleased, the three coastal counties are, uh, really right at the tip of our effort right now. Harmony came aboard in November and she's a contractor for us and she's helping three counties, uh, design process and, um, tailor kind of approaches to something we're, again, called Water Needs Forums. The first cohort of counties, uh, Commissioner Voice alluded to, there's a group that's now until late spring may, uh, would culminate them and they're actually have started, but we have room for probably one or two more counties would be kind of ideal, I think, in this first wave. And then the second half of the year, we do have another cohort that, uh, some counties, uh, would join. But we do think there's room now and we, we're really kind of excited because Harmony is gonna tell you about, you know, how she approaches this work, which is to me very, um, really amazing in terms of its community orientation. But let me walk you through the document, uh, you know, the one that says Why Water. Um, I'm not gonna read this to you, but I am going to kind of remind you that when we're in the middle of the rainy season, as I look out my window, I live in the valley, here on the coast, uh, we kind of have this andesia that we forget, in about eight months, it's gonna be dry. And it's, so it's not always about what falls out of the sky, but there are all kinds of issues related to water. Largely can be seasonal issues, but, uh, beyond that, there are cost issues, affordability, uh, long-term planning, infrastructure, that we know that, uh, Oregon in many ways, we're just behind in terms of our planning. So, what's the role of counties in all of this? Um, you as county Commissioners and the, the county entity in terms of planning with regard to, uh, local public facility plans, comprehensive plans, they're really fundamental that water are part of those plans going forward. Uh, and as you know, our land use system is really about, uh, the model's about fifty years old. And in some respect, one of the things that we haven't had is capacity for you to do planning, to kinda look ahead. So, we do think this arrangement with Harmony is really efficient in terms of how you can start to put your arms around this water issue, um, and do it now. Uh, because part of, one of the opportunities we have with the Oregon Legislature is relationships with, uh, a number of legislators that are very, I think, understanding of the local county perspective as it relates to water and other issues. One is a former county commissioner who's now a legislator. Um, the, the other that leads this, the Water Committee on the, on the House side, uh, is on the, is a member of the other party, so we have a bipartisan kind of approach. We have an urban-rural kind of teamwork and, and I think of just a deep respect for local work. Um, so we really, and, and they're gonna be working next session in twenty twenty-three to really take another step forward in terms of water investments and planning, uh, that will include new federal dollars, kind of a plan for how to integrate those resources into the planning. But again, this is a, this is planning not for a year or two, but really for a decade and more related to water. Okay, so just the last few things about these forums. They would consist of, uh, county Commissioners, it could be all three of you, convening, could be a subset, convening in a neutral way, your community to begin to talk about water, but not in a way where you're making decisions about water, you're really just listening about water needs. So, all of your community members would be part of this process. Uh, there'd be a kickoff forum pretty quickly here in the next, probably the next, uh, forty-five or sixty days. And then Harmony has designed a, really, some really interesting process that happens over a couple months. And then there's a concluding forum, probably in May or June, which would, is really this learning session. Again, these forums are not about kinda solving wa, water problems, they're the initial foundational work where you can engage and listen to your community and we as staff would help you document these, these needs. We wouldn't say these are good or bad, anything like that, we would basically try to work on mutual education and trust around water. And then we'd be ready to work with Representative, uh, Mark Owens and Representative Ken Helm, Representative Reardon. There are three leaders on water and they're working at kind of a regional level around water and they wanna meet us. We do our local work, they want our local work to feed into theirs. Um, so that would happen over the next year in terms of what they're working on. And then when we get to twenty twenty-three, we hope that Curry County and other counties that would invest in this would be in a position to kind of receive additional state investments for water in terms of planning and, and needs just because you're, you're getting prepared and you're, you're doing your homework and we just think it's a fundamental first step, these forums. So, with that, Harmony, I'm gonna kick it over to you and Commissioners, I wanna make sure we have a lot of time for questions, so I, I, I went on a little bit there. Uh, Harmony's gonna talk a little bit about her background, a little bit about how these needs, forums are different. You know, what I, what I forgot to do, Commissioners, is it's Tillamook, Plazza, and, uh, Tillamook, Plazza, and Columbia are the three counties that are jumping into this process right now. A number of other counties have worked on water already, um, so they're in, they've done something called place-based planning in Union County, and Gilam County, and Lincoln County, and the Harni. So, those counties are kind of off and running, but we wanna continue to support them too in their next year. Uh, and then we have, uh, a lot of other counties that we think will be coming aboard as well. So, with that, Harmony, jump in, and then Commissioners, I will, we will stop talking in a little bit. We'll just open the floor, but Harmony, if you'd go ahead, please.
Can I interrupt for just one second? I wa, wanted to give you just a little bit of warning, we are, we are proud to have a high school senior class here, uh, our best high school in Curry County, by the way. I get a sec, yeah. So, there's about eighteen, maybe sixteen, uh, high school seniors here and, uh, they're gonna listen in. I just wanted to give you a little heads-up, add a little additional pressure, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner, glad you're here, and if they have questions about, you know, what, how does this work? What is AOC, anything, we're happy to, happy to try and answer those too.
Excellent, love that, that's great, um, because I, I started working on water when I was about eighteen years old, so I've been at it for twenty years. So, if I can make a plug to any of the high schoolers in the room, why not get going on something that's gonna be big in the future? It's big now, but it's gonna be big, bigger, is water, and it's endlessly fascinating, endlessly complex, which is why I got into it. Um, so I have a, um, bachelor's in, in our studies in politics from Wyman College up in Walla Walla. Then I did my master's in water policy and management at Oregon State University. I've worked with various watersheds across, um, the west. I started in the Walla Walla basin, um, but have, uh, worked in various capacities for various entities all over Oregon. I was most recently with the Water Resources Department where I helped to launch the place-based integrated water resources planning. So, the legislature gave us seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and my predecessors gave, uh, gave us a set of guidelines. And we had four years to essentially help launch, uh, multiple collaborative efforts around the state. And I'm very proud to say that they're still going strong and still very much believe in this work. The state originally thought that it would take about two to three years for these groups to write, write out plans for how they were gonna understand and meet their current and future in-stream and out-of-stream water needs. Here we are five to six years later and they're just now wrapping up. And that's because water is really complex and, and a lot of communities, they haven't yet come together to build, um, kind of relationships around water and to really understand the complex needs and interests and how they interrelate. And so, uh, with place-based planning, one thing that we learned right out, right out of the gate was that communities would really benefit from some upfront work, um, to do some information gathering, to see what's already out there, what's already happening, and to build the relationships that are necessary to sustain long-term collaborative- relationships that are necessary to sustain long-term collaborative, multi-stakeholder efforts. When you're talking about water, you know, it's, because it moves across the landscape, it touches so many people, and it's so, I mean, it's, it's important to everyone. So the stakes are really high, and really everyone's the stakeholder. So that makes it a really, you know, a tricky thing to work on, but it also makes it a really exciting thing to work on because you're able to build bridges in areas where you might not otherwise be able to because everyone holds this mutual interest of caring for their water. So I'm really excited now to be brought on board by the Association of Oregon Counties because as the place-based planning groups wrap up, they were in a pilot phase, and it became very, very clear to me in that work, just the needs across the state, as well as the opportunity for communities to have, start having these conversations. The state is also beginning to have conversations about how to expand this opportunity of supporting communities in this work. And so it's a really good time to start getting ready and to be able to communicate your needs, both to the state as well as there are increasing federal opportunities for investments. One of the biggest barriers to communities receiving these investments is not having clear needs, you know, clear statement of need. And so we see this as a really important first step to clarifying what those needs are in order to attract the resources in terms of money, people, information, to tackle current challenges, as well as start to be proactive about maybe some things that we see coming.
So Commissioners, we would pause there, of course, and we can't kind of see you, so we're just kind of, we hope we haven't lost you, we hope we haven't put you to sleep. We'd love to be there with you, of course, but please jump in with questions.
I don't have any.
Go ahead.
Sorry you can't see us, but you, the audio's been great, the presentation very, very nice. You know, the Native Americans said that water is the first medicine. You see the people that are trapped on the freeway in Virginia for 24 hours, no water. You know, Ms. Burright just mentioned that everybody is a stakeholder, and the needs, as we mentioned, are growing, and just, just that demand. I just said during break, Andy, I got to see a picture of a little lad about 10 years old holding up a steelhead. And, you know, this is the area of the Wild Rivers Coast, and we're just very proud of our pristine rivers here, and this is all part of it. We are all a stakeholder in that interest, our visitor promotion, our protecting our natural resources, understanding water. This has really been an interest of mine, and when I had my lodge, boy, water management was everything, even though we had plenty. When, when the peak needs came, boy, you had to be able to make sure you didn't run out in one aspect. So I just want to thank you for that. I, I have one question, and that's just the Oregon Water Resources, and I think you're very familiar with this, on the 100-year plan, that's put a lot of rural counties somewhat on their heels with, with the, the long-term expectations of that and what that can mean for farmers, what it can mean for, I mean, they're just so, this is such a complex thing. And so, yes, starting early, starting now and planning and understanding that 100-year plan and how AOC can help us with that, a great benefit. Thank you.
I want to say that I just think it's increasingly important for communities to have their own vision of what the future looks like and what they want the future to look like, and be able to clearly communicate that when the state comes knocking. You know, when they come knocking, it's a, on these state-level initiatives, I think you'll always be better served if you have a clear idea and a clear understanding of what you need and what you want going into the future. And these types of local projects are, are much more durable over the long run if they are homegrown and, and not necessar, and, you know, can partner with the state but aren't dependent upon the state exclusively.
So, all right.
Any other questions?
What are some of the other counties doing to put together their, you know, I don't know if it's an ad hoc committee, task force, you know, Water Needs Committee? How do you pull all those stakeholders together? What have you seen, and this question's to either one of you, that has been some of the other counties, especially, especially rural county successes towards that, that objective, those goals? And that's where you-
Why don't you go on, because Harmony and I were just, were in the middle of building relationships with the conveners in each of these counties who are county commissioners. So one of the things we started out the gate, Commissioners, we just kind of listened, this was about a month ago, we actually got out in the field and spent a pretty big chunk of afternoons with commissioners from three different counties, and we just kind of tried to learn and listen to them about the current water world and kind of all of the voices and the interests and the, we've started to kind of map things. But, but, and then just yesterday, we're digging into some actual system design, process design, but Harmony, maybe you can talk about how do we get our arms around this kind of inclusive creature that is water, but all of the, all of the interests and the organizations, individuals, local governments, economic, you know, the ag world, the environmental community, how do we get all of those pieces into this process? Could you talk about that a little bit, how we envision that?
Yeah, so I love my background in community and public participation, and also in collaborative decision-making and community building. And so we're starting to think through like all of the different interest areas and how can we start to bring forward people that we consider to be community builders in those different areas? So maybe in your fishing community, who is a community builder, in, you know, the farming community, who has the ability to bring people together, in the environmental conservation community, identifying those folks that have the ability to draw, you know, to build trust with others and draw others into the conversation and create an environment where others feel comfortable sharing. And so it's, it's building that really strong kind of network of community builders and then building out from there, having them then reach out and invite others. I kind of equated it to a snowball approach, you know, we start with a strong core and kind of build out from there. The idea being that trust is going to be the nucleus of any long-term successful effort, and you have to be really deliberate about building trust, and that's going to happen through strong relationships where they already exist, kind of building out from there. And then it's also identifying the many ways in which people may or may not be able to engage in the effort. If our desire is to have as many people participate as possible, in-person or virtual meetings might not be the, you know, the only or best way. And so thinking about supplemental ways to get input and feedback, maybe that's through one-on-one conversations, through small group discussions, surveys, you know, doing just kind of simple internet searches. There's a lot of different ways to gather the information. But ultimately, if you're to be successful over the long run, you know, you really need to have a cohesive, coherent group of people that gel, who then are receiving, can create the environment to receive all this diverse input, and then maybe have some of the kind of wherewithal to be able to start taking action on it.
Very good.
Very good.
Thank you. So our next, our next step is to join the other counties that have offered through the American Rescue Plan funding, the $25,000 to AOC. And the sooner the better, if, and that's the message going out, obviously throughout the state and very important. Do I have that correct?
That is correct, Commissioner. And, you know, as I noted with the, the three counties that are off and running, I think there's a perfect, I think you guys would be a great addition to this first cohort. And what Harmony and I did, and we would do again, you know, we're in the middle of this latest virus variation, of course, but we would really aim to get out in the field and come down to the community to talk with you Commissioners in person in terms of kind of this initial, additional listening for us about your community and begin this process of, you know, that it works for you, because it's, each community's a little bit different. You know, Tillamook is different, Klatsup, they're right next door, but they've got some different challenges for a variety of reasons, some environmental, some how their communities are structured. So you'll be, you'll be unique, like, like all of our counties. So we would love, love to do it for you. We'd love to get out in the field and spend some time doing some initial outreach and walking you through what are these, what are the dates, what are the, when Harmony mentioned, some of the tools, we could customize them for you. And we think having Curry, I think having Curry County as another member of this first cohort really helps with our legislative world because, you know, to have you in, I think is just a great addition because you're a tremendous asset to Oregon and your water needs are different than everybody else's. And so it would be, it'd be a great example when we work with the legislature and those, that you would be one of the early adopters and the early stories that we could tell around needs with them. I just think it would be a very positive thing for you and for Oregon.
So Andy, you know, Klatsup and Tillamook are the north end of the state bookends, and Coos and Curry County are the south end bookends. And thanks to AOC, I know the Commissioners pretty well in Klatsup and Tillamook County both, obviously Coos County. And having an opportunity to work with Mark Owens again, and that was also an introduction through the Natural Resources Committee work that we were involved with, Mark Owens, and then Representative Helm, just absolutely, yeah, both parties well represented, which I appreciate, and you mentioned. And I think that Curry County have a little inside track if we had a chance to work with those people, and we look forward to that. Of course, Representative David Brock Smith, he's certainly got his finger on the pulse of, of everything that AOC does and the legislation that, that comes from this. And, you know, I'll just conclude with, yeah, Oregon Water Resources Department, relationships building there, and Oregon Department of Agriculture, and hopefully the, the legislature will nudge them to move just a little faster in, in the years ahead. Thanks again.
Look forward to having you folks come down and see us in person. We're going to move on to our next agenda item. Thank you for your presentation and-
Did you have anything else, Andy, real quick there?
No, just thank you again, Commissioners. Very, very much appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll plan the schedule. Good to meet you, Ms. Burright.
Brad Rickert.
Good to meet you.
Are you out there, Brad? I saw you in the hallway. Can you hear us?
Oh, we forgot to, we forgot to see if you wanted to ask questions. God, God.
Oh, yeah. If you guys have any questions, we can answer them. Go ahead, sir.
Have to come up to the microphones, please.
When you guys talk about water, are you talking about provisions for like city water? Or are you talking agricultural water, stuff like that, or just all in general?
All in general. In general.
Water resources in general.
Okay.
Did you remember when she said everyone is a stakeholder? That includes everybody in this room.
You have a cranberry history?
My name is Ian Holt. No, we raise cattle.
Okay.
So.
What's your last name?
Holt. Uh, we're from Langley's.
Okay. Thanks for coming, guys. Any other questions? Students? All right.
I think I was off just a little when I said 16. I better recount.
12.
12, thank you.
12 is good. Mr. Rickert.
Morning.
How are you, sir?
I have passed the football.
Yeah.
Morning, Commissioners. So I'm here today to present the, my review of the November financial statements.
So for all you guys that don't know, this is our finance, this is the Finance Director for the county.
Hello. All right. Let me just get set up here.
Now the pressure's on you, Brad.
Yeah. Okay, so this is much the same report that I, I presented last time, except I did modify it a little bit. And just really for your information, I, I added this column here that compares this year's expenses with last year's expenses. Okay, it's just a tool that, that we accountants like to use to, to see where we're at compared to, compared to the previous year. So I'll start off with payroll. Payroll, because payroll is our largest expense, that's why I like to start off with that one. And it's our largest expense, but it really should be our largest expense, and it, and that's typical of most county, or most counties, businesses, any entity, payroll just tends to, to be the, the largest expense. And, and, and it is the people of the county who, who really make the county run. Therefore, again, it's, that is why it's our largest expense. So as I, as I go through and review the payroll, again, we're, we are 42% of the way through the year, so you would expect that this should fall in line with that roughly. And for the most part, it does. And you can see here in some of the reds that there are a few that are slightly over, nothing concerning there. There are several that are quite a bit under. Criminal patrol, 34%, where we're at 42% this year. The only two areas that I see that, that we're, that I would like to look into a little bit more is this one here, Parks shows that payroll expenses are 46%, which is over budget right now, and we don't have a Parks Director, I haven't had one for a couple of months now. So that's something I want to look into a little bit more. And then, and then the only other number here that is high is in the accounting. And as I explained last month, that is high because of the way that essentially my wages are distributed. Some of those wages were distributed to BACH Office, and that's why that is so low. So that needs to be trued up. But overall, payroll's looking pretty good. The summary of payroll is that right now, as of November, we are $664,000 under budget overall. $356,000 of that affects those, affects general fund departments. So the, just maybe in way of a quick update on the $2 million shortfall that we started the year off with, we are into that $356,000 right now. So this, this savings, if you will, is really determined, or what, what really drives that is our open positions. So currently, we have about seven or eight open, full-time open positions. And so I would also suggest that because this is the driving force behind it, and what is going to help make up that shortfall the most, that every open position we have, that department heads are reevaluating those, those positions, reevaluating them for a need, and also is there another way that maybe we can fill those positions without hiring somebody? For example, right now, we have an open position for the maintenance administrator, part-time maintenance administrator. And I, I believe that this position is needed, but I also wonder, is there another way that we could fill that position? Penny, who works in the Building and Planning Department, does admin work for several different departments? Could we follow the same model for the, for the maintenance admin position? Another, maybe just in way of another example, and, and I've sent all of you an email on this a little while ago about our open parks position. You know, restructuring the parks, the way that the parks is set up can help save us a lot of money and still provide the level of service that we have in the past. So those are some of the ways that we can use these open positions and, and really take advantage of it to, to help save the general fund a little bit more. One, one last thing on payroll is the, the Planning Department. And right now, it looks fine, it's sitting at 41% right where it should be, but we do have a new position down there. That was unbudgeted, and we don't have revenues to cover it. So I do expect that, that it's going to, that, that percentage is going to increase over the next six months, and, and it will cut down on what we're seeing as savings for, for, in, in, in the way of payroll. Any questions on payroll before we move on?
No, sir.
Okay.
I got, I got one, Brad, I think. So your recommendation right now- I got, I got one, Brad. I think, so your recommendation right now to this board would be to, like a hiring freeze or just?
No, I, I wouldn't suggest a hiring freeze. What I'm suggesting is that any open position we have, the department heads look at, do we really need this position? And, and I believe it's probably happening, but maybe looking at it in a little bit more of a creative way and saying, how can we fill this, is there a way to fill this position without hiring an additional person? And, and I mean, many times that requires putting more work on existing employees. Maybe it's possible, though. And so that, I'm not suggesting any kind of hiring freeze. We're, we, we operate on a pretty bare-bones staff anyway. But that's what I'm suggesting, that we just look at things maybe a little outside the box and, and see if there's something we could do to save a little bit of money.
All right. Any other questions for Brad on the payroll?
Okay, let's move on to the general expenses then. Again, same, same setup as the previous report. We have a comparison here of to last year, which I'm not really gonna focus on, other than to say, you know, if you, if you do look at these close enough, you will see that, well, we'll take Juvenile Department as an example. The difference between this year and last year, they're, they spend, it looks like they have spent eleven thousand dollars more this year than they did last year. But that, that's not really telling the whole story. There are a lot of, some of the admin IGSs, some of the insurances that were posted at different times between last year and this year. And so really, it just comes down to a timing difference. I have looked through a lot of these where it does show this fairly large difference between this year and last year, and, and it's, it's not a concern to me. Looking, again, we're, we're forty-two percent of the way through the year. And so we would expect departments to be falling in line with that. And for the most part, what I see is that departments are under that amount. This one where we see fifty-nine percent in, what is that, fifty-nine percent in tax collection, again, is really a timing difference. They've had a software charge hit the account for the year. And, and so it, it kind of throws that number a little high for now, and it'll correct itself as, as time goes on. You know, same, same with some of these departments down here. That looks like, you know, fifteen percent here. Or, let's see, I think even Accounting, it's down on the next page, you'll see it shows seven percent. I'm, I'm doing amazing on my budget, it looks like. But I also know that I have a big audit expense that's gonna hit, that's gonna correct that and, and make it look right. So, so again, there's, there's not a lot of concern as far as where departments are on their budgets at, at this point that I can see. Okay, and so I don't have a whole lot more, more on that, other than I'm, I'm gonna continue monitoring things. I, I hope next week or next month to have a, a report on some of the revenues that we, that we take in at the county and, and see where they're at compared to budget. So really in conclusion, you know, payroll is continuing to kind of to our budget shortfall. And I just want to reiterate the suggestion to department heads to reevaluate those open positions that we do have here at the county and see if there's some creative way that we can fill it without hiring somebody else. General expenses are, as you can see here, in line or under budget. Overall, I think most departments are doing a, a good job at being careful about what they are spending. However, I would like to suggest that departments look at their budgets and, and see whether maybe they can voluntarily reduce their budgets. Looking at, looking at some items like, just seeing where, where you're at this year compared to what you budgeted, there may be expenses budgeted that aren't needed anymore. Areas, like holding, holding off on updating furniture, remodeling offices. Those are expenses that are most likely not necessary and, and can be held off on until some later date. But if, if we continue to look at these things, I, I think we'll be okay on our budget at the end of the year. Anyway, any questions?
Chris, or Court? Just quick, for the benefit of the high school seniors, would you explain the difference between a fiscal year and a calendar year and why we use a fiscal year and, and financial?
Okay, well, difference between, so a calendar year is, is just simply your January first through December thirty-first dates, as you see on a calendar. Fiscal year is some other time period. Our fiscal year starts on July first and ends on June thirtieth. And a fiscal year could, could be any different, any alternative date range other than what you see on a calendar. That's the difference there.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to commend you and your department on your continued progress in finance. You guys are doing a great job, and I appreciate the transparency for the public on this. For you guys out there, I cannot stress enough how important it is to learn how to balance a checkbook, know how much money you're putting in the bank, and know what your bills are gonna be in expenditures, and doing an annual or a monthly budget for the, for the amount of money you take in and what you're gonna spend, and keeping very good track of it, because Uncle Sam's gonna wanna know at the end of the year firstly, but secondly, you certainly don't wanna be bouncing checks and, and not being able to pay for things that you were hopeful for. So this process that the Finance Director just went through is an extremely important part of your future and your life.
All right, sir. Well, thank you, and we will continue to work to provide more reports and more, more data. That'll help to, uh, help you guys make decisions. That's really what we're here for.
Yep. Thanks, Brad. Appreciate the good work.
Do you, do you kids have any questions for the Financial Director?
I have one here.
Okay, yeah. Go ahead and stand, get up to the mic, introduce yourself, and we're really formal.
Hi, my name's James Barrett. I have a question for you, Mr. Financial Advisor. What would you say is the best way to learn how to do all of the recommended things that Mr. Vice Chairman over there said?
I, I would start, I don't know if you can hear me now, I would start right now with your personal finances. You guys probably all have jobs or have some way of bringing in money. Create a, go into Excel, create a spreadsheet, or even just do it on paper. Make sure, doing exactly what Commissioner Pash said, creating a budget. You have this much coming in, this much going out. You know, you're, you know, you have different expenses for the, for the month. Maybe you have a car expense, maybe you have, you wanna budget some money for entertainment. Maybe you want to keep some in savings, and that's probably a, a really important thing to do, is save a little bit every month. And, and just start now and, and looking at all of, all your incomes and expenses. That's what I would say.
All right, thank you.
If I could expound on that just a little bit as well, again, this is something really important in your life for your future. Maybe sit with your mom and your, or your dad, if you don't already have checking and savings accounts, and say, hey, Mom, Dad, how do you, how do you do, you know, how do you figure all this out? And actually spend some time with them, and if, if they don't do that or can't do that, I'm going to be looking at the college to maybe do a, a, a class, or take an online class, those kind of things to learn how to structure your finances, because it is so important to, to know how much money you're gonna have at the end of the day to pay your bills. So at a minimum, you know, take an online class. But I would say ask your parents, ask, ask an uncle, an aunt that you know is, is financially savvy, and say, hey, I'd, I'd like to learn more about how I can balance my checkbook and how I can plan for my budget process for, for the next year.
All right, I think I'll do that when I get home today. Thank you.
Thank you.
And another avenue is Coos Curry Electric does a Financial Peace University with that famous financial guy. What's his name? Dave, is it?
Warren Buffett.
Huh?
Warren Buffett.
Warren Buffett.
Yeah, there's one.
There's one to take it, yeah, you can, he's, he's a, well, one of the richest men in the world and, and still lives in this house he grew up in. So save, 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 save is a key, and I wish I could remember that, but if you get a hold of Coos... Dave Ramsey.
Yeah, Dave Ramsey.
There you go. Dave Ramsey, you can get on, hold him, you know, look up him through online stuff or Coos Curry Electric. They have a, a Financial Peace University. They do every, every couple of months or sectors or whatever. And they're really a good opportunity to, to learn. And just, all I can say is right now, if you have a credit card, cut it up. Cut it up.
Mr. Chair, you have another question?
Yep, go ahead.
I'll just add something to that real quick, if I may.
Yeah.
You just heard Commissioner Herzog say, cut credit cards. Boy, I couldn't give you any better advice. Understanding debt, especially when you start, if you go into business, and if any of you ever get to the point where you will employ people, that's a tremendous responsibility, but it's also extremely rewarding. And it's what makes America go around, what makes America a little bit different. But if you can understand debt, understand a balance sheet where you say, okay, I have these assets and I have these liabilities. How do I make this work on a daily, weekly, monthly basis? And then, yeah, just, just understand the debt, interest, paying interest is, is like, it's brutal. It is absolutely brutal, whether it's a credit card or otherwise. So, yeah, thanks for the opportunity to present that. Next question?
Yes, ma'am.
You're fine. Just take it back and say your name and where you're from and ask you a question.
Hi, I'm Jamie. I'm from Langley's, Oregon, but I'm originally from Phoenix, Arizona. So in the future, I'm gonna go to college and do photography. So I want to do a business. Would I rather rent it or buy a, like a little area to start a photography business?
Well, this is my, this is my opinion. And, and I'll, I'll give you a little background on it. I, I did try to start a photography business years ago. Do it out of any existing space you have. Anytime you can reduce your expenses, not have to pay for your own building, that would, that would be preferable. Now, if you're, I guess it kind of depends on what you're looking at doing. If you're trying to open up a, like a gallery or, you know, some, some type of storefront, renting or buying, I, I guess it, I don't know, it kind of depends on the situation. I, I, I think that most businesses start off with renting. It, it limits some of your, your risk there to, to start off with, you know, if you have a five thousand dollar monthly rent versus a, a five hundred thousand dollar building. Just some thoughts.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyes would like to add.
Oh, just, you know, if anybody has a business interest, the first thing you gotta learn, the word overhead. Raise your hand if you know what that means, overhead. Very good. That's cost of doing business. If you wanna be successful, you've gotta control costs. One thing in our county here that is a good note, despite that we, we have some, some deficit issues right now, is we do not have debt. A lot of the cities around Oregon, different municipalities, they have debt. We don't have debt, so that's a basis right there for starting a build back, you know, if I could put it in the terms of a Curry comeback. So, yeah, not having that debt, not having to worry about servicing it, managing it, worrying about it. It's, it's easier to focus on, you know, how to build the revenues and cut costs.
Any other questions?
Thanks again, Brad.
Thanks a guys, thanks a million, you guys. So we are done with presentations. I'll...
See, eleven-thirty.
Entertain a motion to accept a consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say yes.
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. The action slash discussion items, first one is Sheriff's Office and Road Department request for approval of expenditure for tower. Phil and Rich Christensen, Phil McDonald, sorry.
That's okay. Good morning. It's still morning, so, um, thank you for the time today. What we're proposing is, well, just a little background on what's going on. We pay a maintenance contract for numerous items with Day Wireless, and one of them, one of the things that we pay for is they do preventative maintenance checks on all of our radio, all of our tower sites and all of our radios. So they've gone through and they've done all the preventive maintenances, and they identified a number of issues that needed to be addressed. They addressed everything that they could address, there's just realignment, you know, tuning, that kind of stuff. And then there are a list of parts and pieces that need to be replaced. And the, the parts and the, the broken items are anywhere from antennas to some isolators, some radio equipment that need to be replaced to keep our system operating at optimal, well, to keep it operating. And so the total cost of the parts and the, the labor to replace those parts, I'm gonna be honest, the labor is more expensive than the parts because it requires a tower crew because they have to, they have to climb the towers. There's three separate sites that need repairs, and the total bill combined for all three sites comes to twenty-five thousand eighteen... Right at a little over twenty-five thousand dollars. That would come out of the towers' maintenance fund that the Road Department has. Rich and I went over all this with Day Wireless and discussed this, and so it would overspend that fund, and so what we're, and, and it's passed his signature authority. So what we're, we're requesting is that, and so you also notice in your packet, there's a supplemental budget that's been prepared. So we're requesting that you approve the supplemental budget, and you approve the expenditure of the twenty-five thousand dollars for the repairs to the, the complete radio system. And I think you also have a list in there, this is all the stuff that they already did, that's all covered in the contract. But, you know, the, the actual cost of the broken parts, you know, the parts that are no longer functioning, those are parts that we have to replace. The timeline on this is, the parts, it's depending on the price of, and the slow boat from wherever they come from. So that's gonna be part of the time period, or part of the timing on this, so that's what we're requesting.
All right. Any questions?
So let's talk about Curry County Towers a little bit. We have five, right? And we're replacing generators?
No, that's, that's not what we're doing.
No, I'm just saying in, in the long-term maintenance aspect of what you have to deal with, those five towers, you know, we did the seven hundred and fifteen thousand with Dispatch. So the public knows that has really not much to do with the towers, correct?
Well, it's all part and parcel of the same system, but it does more than, yeah.
Okay, so it's kind of an indirect?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. And then the eight hundred thousand that we, we pulled out of reserves about, excuse me, the road fund reserves about a year and a half ago? Tell the public, remind the public what that was for, just...
That, that replaced, what that did was that replaced the microwave system that links everything together and allows everyone to talk throughout the county, whether you're the ambulance in Agnes or you're the Road Department working in Agnes, or the Sheriff's Office working in Agnes, or you're the Six's Fire Department and you need more help, you call into Dispatch. The microwave system is what carries all of that through the air from tower to tower and then drops it back into the nine-one-one center. Or into the Road Department when, you know, when the Road, the Road Department's calling the office saying, hey, send the mechanic out here, you know, or we got a truck broke down, send another whatever, you know, when they're, when they're using their radio system. Or it's as simple as the Road Department is doing some work and it's on a, on a windy road, and they got one guy at one end and one guy at the other end, and they can't see each other, and they're talking back and forth on the radio saying, all right, I'm sending five cars, and the last one is a white, you know, Honda Legacy. When it comes by, then you can send your cars. I mean, everything from that to, we're responding to a domestic or whatever the case may be runs through. Or if you have an AT&amp;T phone and you live in Agnes, that also depends on the microwave system that we have. So that's, you know, that's what that eight hundred thousand dollars did. It completely replaced a system that no longer worked.
And improved the communication, right?
Yes, very much so.
That, that's very helpful, if I may, Mr. Chair. So part of, you know, I just referenced what you're up against, maybe that's not the best term, but in compared... but in compared to other counties and other areas, I just want the public to know, the terrain we have here is the most rugged in North America. And so the dispatch centers are on the ocean, sea level, basically. And so to make these repeaters work back and forth, we have to get, yeah, that's why we have five towers, compared to other areas.
I'd like to have, like, ten, but we don't have ten, so, but anyways--
You better come back next year.
Yeah, but, um, but so this twenty-five thousand dollars replaces, replaces some antennas, and then some isolators which are, uh, part of the repeater system, um--
You okay, bud?
Is he standing with his legs locked?
Do we, do we need to use one of those radios to call somebody that--
I think we are good.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, so the eight hundred and twelve thousand dollars that we spent, um, a few years ago, um, after a storm that took out a couple of microwave dishes, um, yes, that was, that replaced us, uh, the carrying part of the system that every emergency response, and like I said-- One oh two station two, would you send the ambulance over to the Commissioner's meeting room? We're gonna go take a break.
Let's, we'll, we'll take a break, James, can you shut this thing off? Welcome back, and, uh, we're about ready to ask for a motion to, or we got more questions.
I think Richard was gonna speak--
Okay.
So a couple of weeks ago, Road Department with the Sheriff Department and Day Wireless about this priority work, and we support that work, and we reached out to Brad Rucker with the Finance Department to amend our budget for this work, 'cause it wasn't planned, and that's before you, and we, uh, recommend, uh, you support this project in amending our budget.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I don't really have a question, but I'd like to make a statement really about this. Um, you know, the, the towers are an integral, integral part of the communication system for our first responders, and that doesn't only include the Sheriff's Department, it includes the Road Department, it includes code enforcement, it includes everyone that is a first responder in this county. And, uh, I know there's, there's a lot being said about some of the things that are going on in this county. Uh, I would like to say, I would like to even include Kuzkury Electric as first responders. Look at the service we get from them, in the middle of a windstorm, electric goes out, they're out on the, on the road, switching boxes and whatever they gotta do to climbing poles and all that stuff to, to get the power back on, so I'd like to give them, uh, some kudos, and there's a lot being said around, around the county right now about who's really out there working, who's out there doing their job. And, uh, I like to commend the Sheriff's Department for the SARS rescue the other day. There was a lot said about having that snowcat, why and who, and how's it gonna get paid for, no, no money was taken from the County General Fund, it was all titled "Three Money." And guess what, it saved, I believe it saved four lives the other day.
And two dogs.
And if that snowcat never moves again, if it never moves out of its tracks again, it paid for itself the other day, because if that was your son, your daughter, your wife, your father, your mother, what would you do to go save them people? And we got a Sheriff's Department that on New Year's Eve, while everyone else is out having fun partying, is out in the woods with, with the rescue's, uh, uh, crew to find these people and bring them back alive and safe, so. Kudos to the first responders, and I would make a motion to support this.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, been moved and seconded to approve the discussion, action item eight A. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Propose, say no, motion carries three to zero, thanks, guys.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next thing on the action discussion items is capping the road fund reserve for balancing the Curry Budget's proposed county ordinance.
Did you read all that, Commissioners?
Yes.
So, yeah, what a way to maybe start the new year, uh, you know, I think I misspoke, there's twenty-nine-- I think there might be twenty-seven million in the budget. Um, and, you know, spending has been an issue with me, uh, and I've communicated that as best I can for several years now. Um, that's not to say departments are wasteful, but it is to say that, uh, the boards I've served on have, uh, made some bad mistakes, and, uh, I oppose those, and I'm gonna keep imposing those, and, um, this is, uh, this is a sacred function here, this is a sacred amount of money, and, um, it gives us a, it gives us a sense that because it's that reserve, because that reserve is available, that we don't have to manage as well. And I just wanna challenge the board and, um, and all the departments, as we move forward, uh, it's gonna be a big job and a big responsibility, and yet I proceed with tremendous optimism, even without a consumption tax, that we can save the jobs and maintain the services here, and not go to a mandated, uh, program, mandated services only. Um, we have to protect our jobs and protect those services, and I'm gonna be front and center on that, uh, full-time, and, um, I think this, this ordinance, uh, that I'm proposing again, 'cause we didn't get the votes four months ago, five months ago, um, that it sends a message to the, to the citizens and the taxpayers, the homeowners, that, yeah, we understand what we're up against here, and we are trying desperately to get away from the two million dollar budget shortfalls, and, uh, grow out of this, and control costs, and make very, very wise decisions. Uh, if we don't, we're gonna lose some of our, uh, some of our support and, uh, the, the reasons that we're here. So I'm asking the board to look at another ordinance, or, or look at this again, to say, "Okay, if we, uh, if we need to get into the road fund reserves for another seven, eight million, whatever the, the amount would be in the next two or three years," um, this really gives us an incentive to jump on board to finding new resources and managing better, and showing, showing the citizens that we can be trustworthy. Um, and it's just not this board, or that board, or even three or four boards ago. This has been part of the Curry County history, and this is a chance for us to overcome that. And I cannot think of a better word or a better concept than manage well. So I would like to cap it, um, and I wanna be on record, uh, that I see, I see what's happening here, and, uh, just wanna encourage this board that, uh, this, this is a new day, and this is what we can do, and, uh, um, move forward with, with, uh, very, very good management.
Questions? I just got a comment, I, I talked to Sheriff Ward about this, had him in my office, and, uh, I don't know if it surprised me or not, but he, it did a little bit, but he said he's in favor of this. So, for that reason, I'm in favor of this. Yeah, you said cap it, you--
I'm gonna have to disagree with you. I, I understand you may cap it to a certain amount, but--
Yeah, twenty--
You can't take the money away from, uh, what you got to spend until you have another revenue source. Uh, I've already heard that, you know, Commissioner Boyce saying that we're going in and we're gonna cut the Sheriff's Office six hundred thousand dollars or so. Well, if you do that, that's, that's really gonna devastate what we can provide to the county service.
Wait, I gotta interrupt you, where in the world did you hear that?
That's what I heard.
Well, that's what you heard.
Uh, yeah, and I understand--
You don't believe that, do you, Sheriff?
We're gonna get into something right here, okay, I'm gonna start--
You just said something that's terribly false, sir.
I'm talking.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm gonna disagree--
Well, you can disagree all you want, but I'm here to talk--
Where did you hear that I wanna cut six hundred thousand dollars?
That's what I was told.
Have I ever voted against any of your budgets, ever?
What I understand, that you've already been to somebody asking them to run for sheriff 'cause you need big changes, and don't say you didn't, because I know they came to me and told me about this.
That's false, that's false, period.
Really?
That's false.
Wow.
So you come in here with a chip on your shoulder--
No, I'm coming here--
One of the boarders, please.
I do know--
One person did it.
Are you for capping the road fund reserves, Sheriff? At, once it gets to twenty million dollars, are you in favor of that?
We haven't used hardly any of the road fund reserves for a long time, and I'm just saying, if you cap it, it really doesn't matter, because you're, you can, you know, redo it as well. But I know the roadmaster came to each one of you and said, "We need to get rid of Brad Alcorn off the Budget Committee, and, because he's in favor of using road fund reserves."
Another false statement.
That's what you get, what you did.
Oh, my gosh.
I have, I have people who have admitted that.
Oh, you, you probably have audio of it, too, okay, I, I've seen how that works, Sheriff, please.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, yeah, let's try to keep this on, on the topic here, please.
I get tired of being falsely accused, it's absolutely ridiculous. That did not happen, Sheriff, did not happen.
Well, let's get him in here--
Brad Alcorn has not been in my office, okay?
You didn't go to him at a, at a Veterans Reef thing that was going on and ask him to run for sheriff, 'cause you think you, you need somebody that you can work with?
Even if that were true, what's it got to do with, with this agenda item, sir? What's it got to do with this? You have some issues with me, and I think we could sit down and talk those out, but right now, let's just stay on the--
No, you'll write me a letter saying, you know, you, you know, you threatened me, and, uh--
I threaten you?
Yeah, you did. I have, I have it in proof, I have it in writing.
Okay, mhm.
That's why I haven't responded to you since April twenty-ninth, when you sent me that email. Okay? Now, I didn't wanna bring this up, but the fact of the matter is, when you're talking road fund reserves, I know the roadmaster came to each one of you and said, "Let's get Brad, let's get somebody else other than Brad." And Brad was an experienced person on the Budget Committee, three years that he's been doing, he knows the budget, and just because he's ex-law enforcement, well, your main priority should be law enforcement, public safety, not parking spaces and things like that. I know he came to you and said, "Let's get somebody else other than Brad." And lo and behold, you guys pulled some, pulled him off of it and put somebody else on there that has never been here, never, doesn't know anything about the county budget, but yet-- bring, you know, I'm not saying he's not gonna do a good job, I'm just saying that's what happened.
And that's true, he, you know, he, he campaigned for a, a fella, and he got it, so--
Right.
That's, that happened. Chris?
So to get back on topic here, um, I, I firstly don't know that it's even legal to have, um, a road fund reserve cap. This was, this was done through the state, and, uh, I, I think we would probably wanna have County Council look into the legality of it to begin with, um, through the state, uh, and the, uh, legal offices up there.
There is an ORS that says those road funds can be used for patrol and indirect cost of patrol. Now, you try to take that away, you know, you're never gonna get any resport from the community when you got twenty-seven million in there that doesn't belong to the road, it belongs to the county. And I'm kinda sick and tired of having to defend that every year when we go and try to keep our Sheriff's Office whole, so we can provide a service to our community. It's very important for us that we provide that service to our community.
Secondly, I would like to say that the public elects us to go in and do our diligence and do our work, and I would like to believe that the people sitting at these desks here, um, have a, a, uh, enough knowledge about the county and what it takes and what is really needed to run the county, um, that they wouldn't just go willy-nilly throwing money away. So to, to need a cap, as we, we've been through this several months ago, we went through this exact same, um, action item, um, and we decided not to do it because we've got three people here that before the money's spent, the Budget Committee on a budget, um, as, as a budget line item, we're gonna discuss and approve or decline as a seven-member committee. And then if you want to, and the finalization of the budget, as we saw last year, some things were changed, um, but that's what we're here for, that's what the public elects us for. So in order for this money to get spent, we have to agree on it, along with the Budget Committee. So I, I, I don't know that we really need the cap, and again, this is something we, we've discussed several months ago, and we decided not to. Um, and again, I would like to also challenge the legality of it, I'm not saying it's, it's not illegal, I just wanna make sure before we put something like this in place that it is something that's legal. Um, but secondly, I, I, I fully would imagine the citizens of this county entrust us with the decision to spend that money, and, um, and it would have to happen that way. Even, the same way it would have to happen if we went through the cap, if we had an emergency. We would have to get together and decide to spend that money, so we don't really need the cap, we just need to be, uh, united in our thoughts of spending that money, or at least a, a majority decision to spend that money, um, rather than putting a cap.
And, and just for clarification, John, that was at twenty, twenty million, that wasn't just capping it right now at whatever it is. This, this, the proposal before us, or the, the action slash discussion item before us is capping the road fund at twenty million. So, and Chris is, Chris is right, I mean, if we got to twenty million and things, you know, but I think, from what I've heard today in the earlier parts of this meeting, is we, we're on a, we're, we're on a good, we got a good way going, we're on the right path to a consumption tax, it doesn't, wouldn't cost the taxpayers anything.
Let's get that in, let's get that going before we take away our only source of revenue to keep us whole.
But, you, I know, you, I said, you told me in my office that you, you're okay with capping it at twenty million.
We, we talked a little bit about it, I didn't say I wanna cap it, you know, where it's at now.
No, no, I, at, at twenty, you know, it, it's at twenty-nine or thirty million right now, whatever the number is, the, the item, the, what's before us right now is capping it at twenty million. And I can understand Cord's point of view, and I, Chris is saying, and likewise, Chris is, because we're, we're the, we, we, we gotta make a decision when it comes time to do whatever for the, for the betterment of Curry County.
I have no problem with that, Commissioner, I'm just saying, don't take something away to a point where we don't have any revenue to continue with while we've built up over the years. Everybody says they support law enforcement, but to me, it sounded like a defunding law enforcement.
No, no, I, I'm not in favor of that.
We got nine million before we get to that point? That doesn't give you some security for several years, Sheriff?
What doesn't give me security is what I've been told about the guy that you went confronted.
Confirmed, I don't know--
That you're going in and--
Board, here we are.
And there's gonna be cuts on the Sheriff's Office.
Three things have been said that are not true. I want the public to know, I never voted against the, the law enforcement budget here, to the contrary.
Well, this whole thing has to be voted on in, as a budget committee--
You're interrupting me, I want the public to know--
Yeah, no interrupting, let's try--
I didn't say anything like that, Sheriff, so I'm at a disadvantage here to what you decide you wanna believe. That's bad business, and it's very unfortunate.
Well, I do believe--
But it's common around here, so.
Rich, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about this, 'cause my name's brought up and stuff, and I've been working on this for four years in four budget committees, and I've seen, did a lot of research on this, and a lot of information's been lost, committees, presentations, uh, where they say no more use of road funds. Citizen Budget Advisory Committee said that like six years ago. The last budget committee before this one said, "No more road funds," we got rid of that committee. I think we really need a workshop on this, and the thing is, Sheriff's right, we need to find other revenue. We lost eight million dollars between General Fund and Road Department of revenue from the Lost of Timber receipts. You know, we're, it takes over six million dollars a year to take care of the roads in Curry County due to two thousand twelve costs, and we only have like three and a quarter million dollars a year coming in. We need that money to keep our bridges and roads, and we've been, like Brad Alfred Rucker said, we gotta look at different ways of doing things, and the Road Department has done that in spades. We've done that thirty-five years ago, when we saved thirty-five millions of dollars. You know, these last four years, we're doing grants, not only that, is we're, we're, uh, fun exchanges those grants, and we're leading these projects, they're paying, these grants are paying my wages and my team's wages, we're doing inter-agency projects where we're combining our teams. I have a backfilled positions, I'm using state help for helping chip seals, and looking outside the box. We're continuing to do that, but the road fund just keeps going down, 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 you know, this year was requested two point eight million dollars for-- You know, this year was requested $2.8 million for the road fund. So, you know, we don't know where that's gonna land yet, and, you know, but we'll see. And so, I think what really needs to happen is we need a workshop on this, pull all the history, see how we got here, and also too, is not just say, "Hey, it's not my problem, it's your problem." You know, "It's all our problem." And I said this four years ago, "It's all our problem, we gotta work together, and if we don't work together, we're never gonna make anything happen." And so the thing is, is that, you know, we need to stop pointing fingers at each other and getting off our high horses and just say what we can do to serve this community to the best of our ability and find a tax measure of whatever kind. You know, what David Barnes brought today was awesome, you know? What Dan DeYoung with, is it Josephine County? What he's presenting is great, you know? What these other counties did to get sheriff tax measure, we should be mirroring that. And so, but no, we just fight. And so, I don't know, you know, I've been watching this for four years, I've explained this for four years at every budget committee, and still, we just end up fighting. And so, we're spinning our wheels, and we have an opportunity right now to try to get a tax measure put in place for this next November's ballot, and time is slipping away because everybody's saying, "No, it's not my problem, it's your problem." You know what I mean? You know, and the perspective is, is that if the Road Department 35 years ago did not, was not a model agency, we would, 60% of our staff and roads would not be maintained right now. And not only that is, 40% of everybody's wages in finance and your wages, you know, would, you'd be taking a 40% pay cut. And so the thing is, is that this 29 or 25 million that's left, in a handful of years, it's gonna be gone. And so it's like, we gotta get it together. So that's all I gotta say.
And I think we're on our right path, and today, today earlier in this meeting, it proved it, that we are moving ahead, we're gonna, you know, this consumption tax, sales tax, whatever, however we're gonna label it, is, you know, and Sheriff's been in my office and said, "Hey, I'm for it, let's move forward, let's get Dan and that, and his sheriff friend in Josephine County, you've been in my office, I know you've been in everybody's..." We want, we want to work together, that's the key, and I think we can. Just like whether it's microwaves on a tower or whatever, but this is, we have got to do it together, and nobody's gonna do it for us, so we're gonna do it ourselves. And I, you know, we'll have something at the next meeting and just move forward, and we'll come up with a plan, and then just, Matt Hall is gonna just go to bat for us on, in the paper and support us 100% through the Curry County Reporter, and, aren't you, Matt?
Yes.
Yeah. And the Portorfer News, and, you know, then we'll get, we'll get the Coastal Pilot onboard and... No, you're just gonna help, you're just gonna help push it forward as far as the...
You're over on Muncher, too, just so you know.
Advertising, or, you know, just, you know, and all that, but we're gonna get there, guys, so, honest. Court?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So if we want to work together, we're not gonna be able to do it by listening to rumors, okay? This has been pervasive here for a long time, and if we can't get around that, and I started to say, and I want the public to know, I had no, I've never voted against the budget here, the law enforcement budget. I used to have a line of duty death report every day, 'cause I have a son that's a police officer. Last year, 329 police officers were shot in this country, and that number has gone up about 60%. And I don't get to do that report anymore, and that hurts. So, I'm sorry that there's rumors out there, I'm sorry that people believe them, want to believe them, that's counterproductive. I appreciate the management of the sheriff's office here. Any $600,000 fee, I don't have a clue what that was. I will admit that I heard John was gonna retire. I haven't had a chance to ask him, but if that's true, then yeah, as a Commissioner, I'm gonna be looking to find someone to fill his shoes. That's not my job, but it is one aspect of our responsibilities here, in the interest of number one responsibility being public safety. So, I just, I just challenge anyone, encourage anyone, don't listen to the garbage. Don't listen to the garbage, it's not true. That's all I got, thank you.
Chris?
I've gotta be somewhere to deliver something to somebody, but I'm just, was there a motion on this before we go to break or not?
I'm gonna go, Commissioner, with, if I may, Mr. Chair, with Roadmaster Christiansen's recommendation, we have a workshop.
Yeah.
And if the board's in favor of that, then I'll just withdraw the, this is an action item.
Just discussion. So let's meet back here at 1:15, and we'll break for lunch. Thank you, guys, everybody. Coming back after lunch and ready to discuss Commissioner liaison roles for 2022. Liaison, we speak French around here when we talk about those roles and responsibilities of Commissioners.
So, yeah, basically just a time to have a discussion about the liaison roles for the next year, see if you guys wanted to stay with the same departments or switch things up, your guys' decision.
Let me get, let me get the, it might, computer's being real slow. So does it have a list of what we're...
There's one online, I have one printed out here, if somebody wanted to use that.
You got, you got one, Court? You got one? There it come up, I saw it in there.
While you're looking, Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to change some things around or keep it as is, I'd be happy either way. I've been interested in working on veterans, maybe the Road Department, but that's...
That's not a request.
Yeah.
You know, we sometimes, over the years, we try and rotate a little bit. I don't know if that actually has benefit when you get, build relationships and focus in, and, but, you know, it's debatable.
Yeah, I was thinking about that, I, um, I don't know, this is my, one year in, and so I'm gonna kind of defer to you two and say, "I'm happy the way it is."
I'm happy the way it is.
Status quo.
So we are essentially though, talking about department heads, we're not really that concerned with the committees and boards, are we?
No, I think it's pretty, you know, that, well, that's all something. I know there's the Airport Boarder Authority that I've been sitting on, yeah, we, we're liaison to everything that... Okay, well, this doesn't really even have the, you know, like maintenance and parks and...
It's on the top.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah. It's okay.
Hello.
Well, I personally would like to stay where I am from my last year in office, I've got good relationships with everyone that I work with. I think, at least from my side of things, I think we're very productive, and that's my two cents.
Okay. I can understand that, I can, yeah. I'm kind of a status quo guy too, so, and you said you were at the beginning, Court, you'd go either way, so I think that's, that's the way.
In 2023, look for big changes.
I don't know.
I wanna, I thought about this a month ago and then completely forgot, so I just wanna say thank you to Council Pope for remembering to bring this up, because it's pretty important that we address this and let the citizens know where we are. And so, yes, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to just take this 2021 and just make it 2022.
Yeah, that's easy, easy, just a type, type, type error.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I'll second it.
It is now.
Been moved and seconded, and all in favor say yes?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries three to zero, that's perfect. So at this point, we will go to...
Question? We didn't have Commissioner comments or just delay till the 19th?
I think so.
Was that a board decision, or what did we just...
I don't know, that whoever did the...
No worries then, okay, so we'll just do that on the 19th. I did, surprising to you, gentlemen, I didn't have much this...
That is a surprise. So, we will go into executive session after we read this whole thing?
If you want to.
You don't want to?
You can just say per the...
Per the...
A1926602 and 1926602H and E.
What he said, that's what we're gonna do.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, folks.
Just for future reference, we haven't done this in the last four or five years.
All right, welcome back, everybody. We are just coming out of executive session, we've directed staff to work as directed, and thank you for having us for the day. This meeting is adjourned.